The legislation to be discussed in our pre-conference meeting, City of Utica Common Council, dated September 7th, 2022. I'd like to start with the mayor's message if nobody opposes to that. I'd like our president to read the mayor's message into the record, please.
All right. And then Deputy Clerk, I know you're running around, but if you could pull copies of the mayor's message from the council.
Oh, perfect. All right. Well, there we are. All right. So, September 7th, 2022, this is the mayor's message to the council. There are several updates I would like to share with the common councils. This is, of course, the mayor speaking. As previously announced, scheduled construction under Bleecker Street for the Blue Creek conduit replacement and repairs began yesterday. Over the next month, there will be mid-block closure between Oskine's Pizzeria and Easy Bottle and Can Redemption Center. All businesses will be accessible and remain open. City personnel have met with all impacted business owners and are working collaboratively with them to minimize disruption. Yesterday, the city announced major renovations and expansion of the Bertolini Clubhouse of LA View. The next several weeks, the city will be issuing a request for proposal to solicit proposals for the best use and management of the facility. Tomorrow, the city will be making a joint announcement with the town of New Hartford and 50 Forward Mohawk Valley. The announcement will involve an initiative in which New Hartford will pay a fee to allow a group of seniors to access the benefits and programming of the senior center. This will save New Hartford money and provide 50 Forward Mohawk Valley with the additional revenue and improve the quality of life for local seniors. On Friday, September 9th, 10:00 a.m., the city will host a remembrance ceremony at the 9/11 memorial located on the Parkway across Sherman Drive. All are welcome to attend. On Tuesday, October 4th, the city is hosting a landlord engagement event. Landlords are encouraged to participate as a plethora of information and resources will be available to them. The event will take place at City Hall and will run from noon to 4:00 p.m. on October 4th. That's the mayor's message to the council. Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you for sharing the mayor's message with us. I'd like to start with legislation. Proclamation number, resolution number one, proclamation for the East Utica Classic. This was sponsored by Councilwoman Clausmo Testa. Councilwoman Testa, would you like to give us a summary about this?
Sure. They're actually going to come the 21st. I thought there was too much on the agenda and I didn't want to take away from what they actually do. So, I asked them to come on the 21st.
Do you want to table it for now or you want to vote on?
No, I'd actually like to table it till the 21st.
Clerk, did you get that message? We'd like to table the resolution to the 21st. All right. Our next piece of legislation is resolution number two, cab alternate. Ordinance amending civil service safety. What department head would like to speak on this piece of legislation? It's the ordinance amending Division Four of the civilian safety road and auditor.
Where's that?
Where is that? I'm looking at it.
Oh, wait a minute. You know what I did? I made this.
She just came through yet.
Yes. I'm jumping to number 32. We just got a piece number 32. I apologize for that. I'm jumping to number 32 because that has to be voted on first. It is an ordinance. It was agreed with us in chambers to change some of the legislation for the auditor, or as to give the mayor the option and the common council the option to have an alternate. This legislation supports that. Is anybody opposing to it?
I don't have.
Oh, you don't?
I don't have 32.
It's 32. Yes.
They just went around handing them out.
It says number two. You want for 32? Here's the new one. Here's the update.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm sorry. I thought that.
It's open for discussion at this time?
Can I have the floor, please?
Absolutely.
Does this, does this relate to the ordinance for the civilian?
Yes, before we, before we can vote on number?
So, you had to amend the actual board before you could actually appoint a member?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good.
It's an ordinance, so everybody's agreed with it. Okay. Very good. The next piece, of course, is resolution number two, appointing for the council an alternate Frederick Nichols. Is there any discussion with that? Yep. Discussion's closed. We'll move to the next piece. Resolution number three, authorizing the sale of wine and beer to Woodlawn Brewery. Any, any discussion with this piece of legislation? Discussion's closed. We'll move to piece of legislation number four, proclamation babes, staff, and nurses. This was sponsored by Councilwoman Beatrice. Mr. Councilwoman Beatrice, would you please give us a summary of this proclamation?
Okay. They're going to be here tonight. What basically happened, I mean, if you read this, it tells you that there was a couple of mother, daughter taking her mother and her white mom friend to date for dinner. Lady choked. The staff at babes came and gave her hind, gave her the, you know, hind leg. There were five persons that were at the table adjacent to it. They got up and saved, they basically saved her. And I read about it. It was in my area. I reached out and I thought it was good to, in the world that we live in today. All we do is hear negative stuff. And I think it was very good that we gave some credit to these people. So, I want to probably do that. They will be here tonight, the three people from babes, the five nurses. And what I'd like to do is right before, after we do the pledge, take them up front and, you know, honor them. I have to sort of read the proclamation and personally hand them out.
Very good. Councilwoman Beatrice, would you mind if I sponsor this with you? Is, would this?
I would love to have full council.
Anybody opposed? Clerk, would you please sponsor full council? Any, any additional discussion with this legislation?
As long as we're doing proclamations, so Katie and Venice and I also have a proclamation tonight. So, maybe we should do the proclamations at the same time.
Right. You just wave the rose order for them.
I, I'm already going to.
Don't make people wait eight hours.
Right. So, right after the public hearing on the properties, we'll move to all the proclamations.
You know, I already talked about that one.
Yeah. Very good. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Aiello. It's about limited parking on Bleecker Street. Councilwoman Aiello, would you please give the council a quick summary on what you would like to do?
Yeah, this is just for the block of 700 block of Bleecker, Fleehands, Crusoes, that area. So, that one side of the street will have 15-minute parking spots now.
You agree with that? Businesses are agreed with that?
Yeah. Yeah, we talked with them. So, I think it's like 90 minutes. It's a long one. Yeah, 90. So, that's the.
Excellent. Well done. Any, any more discussions?
Well, I mean, what happens if people go to Crusoes? I mean, they're okay with it? Bassons, Crusoes, all them?
Yeah.
Sure. So, it was actually, it was requested by a lot of businesses there or Bassons, that people who go in and out. What's happening is there's other businesses where people are spending hours in the business, taking up spots for the businesses that like the walk-in traffic.
And we're still going to have the other streets will stay the same. So, there'll still be options. These will just be a couple 15-minute spot options now. We did the same on Dennisie Street in front of my spot and it worked out well.
No, I get that. But like, why not put like a Bassons parking or something like that? I mean.
So, yeah.
I mean, people go have coffee at Crusoes. I mean, I'm just, I mean, I know that they might be okay with it now. I mean, but maybe doing designated parking spaces for Crusoes or Bassons or something like that, just in front of their spots. I mean, I know it comes first on serve basis, but if you know you're going to be there a little longer than 15 minutes. Does it, I'm not, I'm not, I don't mean to put a wrench in the work that you're working on. I'm just saying, I mean, for me, if I go down there, sometimes I go to Giuseppe's and stuff like that. I mean, you know.
So, it's only, I think it's like two?
Yeah. And then.
The right, Bassons requested, it's right in front of Bassons. It's not exclusive for Bassons?
We did a 90-day trial on Dennisie Street when we tried it and we decided people.
No, what I'm asking you, did you get the okay for all the businesses on that street?
I didn't get to call Fleehan back. So, well, he didn't call me back yet. So, I did reach out with that one, but.
Well, Fleehan is, would there be a 15-minute exchange? But as Samantha said, Crusoe, sometimes they sit, they have a cappuccino, a little cookie, relax a little bit. She's right.
Especially on Sunday. So, I mean, maybe if you did it, maybe if you did it, just maybe not on Sundays or some, or Saturday mornings or something like that.
It's Monday.
I know I'm getting convoluted and I didn't jump in.
Right.
Right. But I'm saying even on Saturdays, people still go there. They pick up cakes. I don't know. Whatever. It's up to you guys. I mean, that's, if they were okay with it, I'm not going to. But I'm even Fleehans. I don't know. It's up to you guys. I would just really.
If you want to change that, it doesn't work.
You want to give it a demo for at least 30 days?
Yeah. And Crusoes are Saturdays, Sunday, Mondays. They're, well, yeah.
Give it a demo for 30 days and see if there's any objections after that. You guys good with that?
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Okay. Thank you for the discussion. Discussion's closed on this piece of legislation. Our next piece of legislation would be resolution number six, sponsored by Councilman Irving. Would you like to give us a quick summary about this proclamation?
Yeah, Patricia Zayzik. I didn't really know her. I looked at the resolution or the proclamation that she received from the City of Utica. So, I know a lot of people liked her, I guess. So, then I went on the streets a little bit to talk to some people, to find out exactly who she was and if this was a good thing to do. So, we finally decided, okay, I'll put it in. It sounds like a good thing. I didn't put it in for as far as they wanted, as far as the block that they wanted, but I think it's going to be a good thing.
Any discussion? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Sorry. So, I could just make one note because I have someone else looking to do the same thing for another street. I would either make the recommendation either to change the street name entirely or we need to make sure that all the signage that's erected is entirely different from street signs because we've had had instances where the post office has different.
Well, we don't want to ever change the street entirely because that would screw up everything. They just hyphenate it. They put a little plaque underneath it. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I would.
That's, I was just going to say, when we did the one on Dewey, it's just under it.
Right. It's hyphenated. We never change a postal street.
No, no, I know that. But we've had instances where it's, that just becomes the street name instead of it being formally changed with them half. So, I would either recommend that the signage be, it look different from an actual street sign.
Very good suggestion.
Like we didn't wipe it out. It can't match.
We'll discuss that with Mark and we'll see if we can get a different-looking sign up.
Okay.
But it shouldn't be on the same pole because it does confuse like the fire department, police department. Like when we did Will Smith Way, he actually renamed the whole entire street. There was nothing above it, nothing below it.
Yeah.
So, just, you know, like if they're going down the street and they're like, where's Patricia? And it's, you know.
I think he had a red one too, didn't he?
Maybe just a little plaque in front of the sign.
Yeah, Will had a different color one too than the other.
Well, we did, we did all the same street sign, but we did gold and black, red and black, and then the regular city street sign.
Okay.
There is another Patricia Street in the City of Utica somewhere, I think, isn't there?
But just like, like a little picture underneath it would be, would probably be beneficial than actually renaming the street.
Okay.
So, does this legislation reflect hyphenating the street? It doesn't, it doesn't change the name, does it? Joint community resolve, common council, or recognize.
It says by naming Francis Street as Patricia Way.
Yeah. We need to change the language on it?
I would.
Just designated a memorial to her there. And just, they could actually, they send it out to secret signs or whoever they, whoever, whoever they send it out to. And then they actually just make a plaque that you could actually just put in front of that.
All right. So, could you?
Not yet, Judge.
It has to be amended. We should not change the name of the street. We're just putting the little memorials.
And also you can't.
Francis Street stays Francis.
You can't change a street by resolution either. I said you can't change a street by resolution either. It's got to be known by ordinance.
Saying you, you do this on many occasions, we put a little plaque there to honor the people. But we do not change the name of the street.
All right, Judge, could you talk to Councilman Irving?
That's the intent of the common council, but it never has been before.
Can you talk to Councilman Irving and he will amend it on the, on the floor after? Is that okay? Give him the proper verbiage. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this legislation? Would you also mind if your colleague, Mr. Councilman Burmaster sponsors it with you?
Oh, that's fine.
I would sponsor it as well.
Okay.
Okay, cool, cool.
Full council? All right.
We're good.
Okay. Our next piece of legislation, I think, is for, these are numbered differently, I guess. Seven?
I'm obsessed.
Yes. Okay. This is for Child Advocacy Center, resolution. What department head would like to speak on this piece of legislation?
I can comment it, but it is with the police. It's the, it's to fund the position for the law enforcement investigator that's assigned to the CAC. We've had this in the past. They're just renewing, they're just renewing the contract.
Okay. Any questions with the contract?
It's already in our budget. Can't do much about it.
Well, you don't have to agree with it.
No, I'm just saying.
Any discussions on the contract for the Child Advocacy Center?
It's only till the end of the year, correct? So.
Yes, of course. I don't know the contract date on it. I'm looking at it now. Yep. It's only good to the end of the year. You're absolutely correct. Any questions? Okay. Let's move to our next piece. Contract is done. I think it's the sale of some properties that we have coming up. We have a property, Councilman Burmaster, 713, 715 Oswego Street. Councilman Burmaster, are you in favor of the calling for a public hearing for this piece of property? It's proposed resolution number eight.
Yeah, the common area.
I know. I saw that too. Are you okay with that, sir?
Yeah.
All right. The adjoining copy is number nine, and that's going to be referred to committee. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Front, three dash five, wherever we place. What is that? How does that?
Waverly's in, it's behind Colonial Laundromat and the Chinese who place in, I guess, what would be considered West Utica, probably.
Right.
Yeah.
It's yours. Yes.
I'm happy to sponsor it. I don't know who did the looking up of council.
Well, of course, you're on urban renewal. Is it okay, Bobby, to?
I'll sponsor, I'll sponsor this legislation as well.
Okay. But we have two colleagues that are urban renewal. Are you guys both okay with this?
Yes.
Bobby? Okay. So, I'm assuming it's in Councilman Burmaster's district. Let's change the sponsorship in his district report.
What about the one we call that it has Bob's name, but it's not whose district it's at?
No, that's Oswego.
That's his district. Yep, that's him.
Oh, it's 713-15. Right. Probably Cagin?
Oswego, no.
I think that's Mr. Irving's.
Yeah.
All right. So, eight to Irving?
Yep. Eight and nine to Irving.
They're talking about Oswego or is it?
I'll sponsor it. I'll sponsor it. Every single piece of legislation that isn't somebody's district goes sponsoring.
All right. Let's go to the next one. It's number 12, sponsored by Councilman Irving. Hopefully, Miller shoots. That is you. I'm almost positive, right? All right. Of course, sir, the first one is for public caring. The second one is returned to committee. Are you okay with those two pieces?
Yeah, that's good.
Our next piece of legislation, also sponsored by Councilman Irving, 35 Baxter Street. Are you good with those two?
Yep. I'm good.
All right. Our next piece of legislation is a transfer ordinance number 16, E&amp;A transfer. We're lucky enough to have Heather Moat here. Heather, would you mind giving us a quick summary of the transfer?
Which one is it?
It's the one about the baseball?
Okay.
South ball.
I wish we had baseball, $30,000.
Several years ago, Lonny Jenkins approached us. They wanted to make a change in the Umps. The Umps didn't like the way they were getting, they didn't like getting 1099s from the city. They thought it would be a little easier if they used some other organization that wouldn't get 1099s. That didn't quite work out for them. Past couple of years, we had COVID, so we really didn't have any expense associated. But Lonny submitted his budget. He did not include this expense. And so, it needs to be budgeted for. They are now going to be paid by us once again.
Are there any questions, Frank?
Yeah, it says referees. They're umpires. That's all. It's nothing major.
Yeah. I'm a CPA.
They could be referees at times, though.
Sometimes you need them. Okay. Any additional discussions with this legislation?
I'm good with it.
Everybody good? Okay. Our next piece of legislation, the only thing we do have to amend, which are, hopefully, our president will amend it on the floor, is the year, fiscal year, 2021 to 2022. Other than that, I'd like to have our budget director, Heather Moat, give us a quick summary about the legislation.
So, the, the next two pieces are cleanups. What we mean by that is both DPW and CSCA had union contracts settled during the year. I could have estimated we'd come and come to E&amp;A and come to the common council, but it's been regular practice for that app. As we wait for the year to kind of level out, and then we pulled from other funds to make those accounts whole. So, both the playgrounds and DPW are simple cleanup, similar to what we did a couple months ago after we acquired.
Okay, they're end-of-year cleanups. Is there any discussion on this piece of legislation? Very good. Both pieces of legislation are closed. Let's move to number 19. It's Restore New York Special Project. I'm sure, is this, is this the great?
It is.
Yes, it is.
We're looking to draw it in.
I'm assuming we got to put this in committee?
Yes, please. This, this in the next one.
Okay. The administration would like to refer both 19 and 20 to committee because of information. Any discussions? Okay. Our next piece of legislation, please accept my apologies about the late, our deputy clerk and our clerk put their heads together and got a quick proclamation for Sonny. Everybody knows he's leaving. He did send an email out to us. I'm hoping that this full council would sponsor this with me. Everybody knows how great a person that Sonny was and how of an asset he was to the city. Is everybody aboard on sponsoring this?
I'm only going to sponsor if he's here tonight.
He's got kids. Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Oh, yes. All right. We jumped to number 21, which is the Harvard Point stuff. Does, well, let me open it up to discussion first. There's two pieces, 21 and 22. Let's start with 21. Go ahead. You have the floor.
So, I'm, I'm sure that this is fine legislation and I'm sure I'll be happy to vote for it, but I'd like to have legible documentation before I am expected to vote for it. You can't read. This documents that got passed on to the council are literally illegible. So, I'm not voting for anything.
Brian, you have any suggestions?
Yeah, they're just scanned poorly. I don't know why they came through this way. The originals, I have the originals for all of them. And they're, they're legible.
The originals, I have the originals for all of them, and they're, they're legible.
Is there any necessity to complete this with this council meeting, because the next one goes in that quarter? I mean, we, I mean, it's good time, next month, couple of weeks.
Can we commit this?
We're okay with it.
Well, this is, this is calling for the, a resolution to send it to planning board and call for a public hearing.
That's true.
You're not voting on the ordinance, you can't vote on the.
Nonetheless, I, I'm still, I'm still not going to vote. We need legible documents, you can't ask us to vote on a resolution if I literally can't read the documents that accompany it. Is there any, is there any harm in waiting two more weeks?
Brian, other than legible documents, is it a possibility we can get a legible document to this table within five, ten minutes?
Yeah.
All right, why don't we do that? If the document's not legible, and we won't move forward, all right?
Brian, so I just explained before, and to you, we're on this, and I want to make sure we're on the same page. Basically, the way I understood this, is part of the, the one road, the lead road, part of it was through the canal port, but we'll just turn it over to the city. And the other road is the new road that's coming in, and we have to name it to make it part of the city.
Brian, why don't you just get legible documents?
This came from Corporation Counsel's office, actually. Yes, but also you're accepting the improvements of the new street as a city.
Right, okay.
As city property, city land.
Okay.
So there's three pieces, um, so three pieces of.
They're all ordinance, or they're all resolutions? They don't need.
Three pieces of legible documents, please, that you can bring down to us with the legible letters that are attached, is that possible, Brian?
Yes.
We'll, uh, put a hold on these until Brian gets back, and if everything goes right, we'll continue, I guess, the four pieces, twenty-one through twenty-four. Okay. When Brian, when Brian gets back, we'll go to, we'll see if those documents are legible, and the council will make a decision.
You're going to leave them in the packet, however, right?
Absolutely.
That way, they would be put in committee?
If the council decides to put them in committee, we won't.
Okay.
So you're going to put it in committee with a date?
Uh, we're going to hold off, the only question was legible documents by Celeste this time, so.
You're going to leave it in committee, the date's going to be blank. And you will, the country has to accommodate.
Call for a public hearing, I understand your answer.
So, if that's what you're going to do, that's fine.
Yeah, but I, I do believe that we should at least call for a public hearing, but let's, uh, hopefully, Brian, we'll get legible documents together, all right? Um, our next piece of legislation is a proclamation to recognize AMP music series, all right. Sponsored by Friend, Aiello, and Irving, uh, who would like to speak on this? What colleague would like to speak on this?
I, I'll speak on it quickly, this is just the Levitt Amp Series, I think everybody knows what it is, ten Monday nights, um, every summer. Uh, ten subsequent Monday nights every summer, sponsored by Utica Monday Night, uh, they've just been enormously successful. They just got awarded a three-year grant, which is a big sort of step up from them, so I just want to honor their work tonight. They are coming tonight, um, I'd like it if this could go full council. As I said, they are, Michelle Stewart, who sort of runs that show, is coming with some of her colleagues, I think, so that we can present this to them.
Okay, um, any questions? Does the council like to sponsor, full sponsor this one? Okay. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Friend, ordinance amending zoning code. Um, Councilwoman Friend, would you like to take a bar and give us a quick summary?
So this is just something I'd want to, that we would need to place in committee, um, per the new zoning ordinance, this has to go before the planning board for a, for them to give us their recommendation before we're allowed to vote on it. I'm suggesting a very simple amendment to the zoning ordinance that we voted on two years ago, which would, um, say that gas stations would not be permitted in residential neighborhoods, including NMUs. Um, I don't believe that gas stations belong in residential neighborhoods, so I would be making, um, we would be making, if we pass this, a minor change to the zoning ordinance. So, but it does have to go to the planning board, ask them for their recommendation, so all I'm asking for tonight is to place it into committee.
Councilwoman, last one, Tess, you have the floor.
Just a couple, a couple of questions, and I guess I can refer this to Corporation Counsel and Brian Thomas. The neighborhood mixed-use district would also have to change its definition, correct? I mean, considering.
Well, what the legislation is proposing is that in all NMU districts, this particular use be not permitted at all. So it would affect every NMU district throughout the city, which includes Court Street, Whitesboro Street.
Nor if you. Not, you, but you may not necessarily need to change the definition of mixed use.
Okay, so that was, that was my first question today.
The use, the use table would change with this, and there's a problem with the form of the actual.
Well, because you would actually have to have the addendum to the.
The use table, yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's formatting issues with the, the actual.
So a couple, another question that I have, if, first of all, the council makes the changes on the zoning code, so it doesn't need approval through the planning board?
It needs to be sent to planning board for a report.
For a report, for a recommendation, but necessarily the council doesn't, I mean, obviously, if that was the case, then that would, that would mean that the planning board would be able to make.
It's the same situation as the chickens and bees. They make their recommendation, and then the council does what they wish.
If we kept certain parts of the zoning code the same, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here right now.
I'm just, I'm just saying, it's the same process.
That's a huge, that's a huge problem that I have, and that's a whole other different, you know, issue. But with that said, that even if we changed this, and that's, that's another thing, so should we not, should we send a resolution to the planning board if this was the case first, asking for their recommendation before it becomes an ordinance? Because we just don't send an ordinance, I mean, if this would kind of be the case of the fire department, send an ordinance without actually having that, I mean, and I hate to use that for the safer grant, but it's kind of basically the same exact thing. So we would have to send a resolution to the planning board, asking for the recommendation, before we actually ever pass an ordinance in order to make an amendment.
That's correct, and it has to go to planning board, planning board makes the recommendation, then it comes back to you to have a public hearing on it.
I mean, sometimes I'm right on legislation, it just depends, you know, who puts it forward. But I'm just, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, just going to throw a dig in there. Okay, so even if, even as it is right now, we still have to have the addendum to the ordinance that shows the difference in the table in order for this to go through.
Ultimately, I mean, yes, ultimately.
Okay, so how does it, how does the, if we were to pass an ordinance, which I think the goal is, obviously, Stewart's is the big forefront of where this legislation came from, how would it, that we go back to the component of the council having the say in a different zoning ordinance, allowing the council have a say and rather just banning it altogether? Because, I mean, there's two different things between the planning board, because the zoning ordinance is going to change, right? So that would still not need a special use permit in front of the planning board?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
Well, I guess I'm kind of confused on that myself. So this is amending the zoning code. According to the table, it just has to go through the planning board because it's already zoned that. So by passing this legislation, does that take that?
Planning, no, planning board would have to approve it either site plan or for special use.
Special use still, on top of if this ordinance still passes and the council passes it?
No, if the, if this.
Okay, so let me just, let me, let me take that back a couple, a couple steps, because I'm confusing myself, and I apologize to this, because I'm, I'm just trying to.
You're making a point here.
Say, for example, when Stewart's went to East Utica, it wasn't zoned for that. So the council had to change the zoning to go back to make it an auto-related use. This would be the same exact thing, kind of, or but, what would, what would make this now?
If something is not permitted within the city, they have the option to go to planning board to ask for a variance, regardless of what the zoning says.
Right, but the council also had a say in that last time, the last, the last time around, before the zoning code was actually changed. So what is this, does this still give the council a say now?
That's because there was a variance, and, and please, for the record, and I, I apologize.
I'm just confused by the way this legislation is written, so I apologize.
But I just, for the record, just, just please specify that you're just trying to clarify what this might, may do if passed.
Right, I'm very confused by the way it's written, is what I should say, so I apologize for that.
Why don't you have our attorney tell you exactly that?
Right.
There's a way to ask the board. You should send to the planning board something that you are considering as a, you should send to the planning board an ordinance, which contains pretty specifically what you are asking them to review, because you're attempting to amend the zoning ordinance. So you should send them a general ordinance, you should send them an ordinance of, if the, the ordinance says the councilperson has put it in, is what she wishes to have happen, uh, then that is what the question is sent to the planning board. The planning board then reviews it. At some point, the planning board reports to you what they have determined is their position regarding this matter. Then, once again, you take up the question, if you want to do that which the councilperson is asking you to do, amending the zoning ordinance. But, but you should send an ordinance, uh, up to the planning board if there is an objection by the Corporation Counsel as to form. You have an objection as to form, uh.
Can I, can I clarify one thing before you enter that?
Please, let me ask her a question.
Ultimately, 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 yes, just because it won't be accurately reflected when it gets published on E-code, but as far as being sent to the planning board, I don't have an issue how it's written, but ultimately, it would need to be amended.
So you would reserve your comments if and when it comes back from the planning board?
Correct.
Okay.
May I?
Just, can I, can I just finish the floor?
Send it to the planning board.
Just, just for one clarification, so the zoning board is no longer involved in gasoline convenience stations?
They will, they will be involved if they have, if anybody where there's a use not permitted within the city, and they want a variance, they have to go for it.
So for this specific one, it shouldn't go to just the zoning board, it should go to the planning board as well? Because right now, the way, for mixed use, in this, in this specific language, it, it just goes to the planning board, it doesn't go in front of the zoning board anymore?
If, and there are certain areas where gas stations and convenience stores are not allowed, so I'm going to, I don't know this because I don't have it in front of me, but let's say it's just residential, they're not allowed.
Right.
They would have to go to zoning board, they don't have to go to planning.
So specifically for this one, in neighborhood mixed-use districts, it doesn't have to go for the zoning?
Currently, currently, currently. That's why I asked you to specify what you're asking, currently.
So what I'm saying is that this as an ordinance amending the zoning code, and he had said, send it to the zoning, the zoning board, I think it needs to be sent to the planning board as well, because they're the one.
No, he said planning, he said planning.
But this one is amending the zoning code, so I think it.
Zoning, zoning board doesn't review anything, zoning board doesn't review anything, it's only planning.
If it's not zoned for that.
If we're making a change to the zoning code, so forget that there's a giant Stewart's debate, forget that any of that's going on right now. If the council wants to change the zoning code, it gets reviewed by the planning board. Then they give us their report, then we make the decision as to change the zoning or not. That's completely separate from all the other things you were asking.
But they can only recommend it, but we still have to pass.
Yes, correct, because we, this is the legislative body.
And we don't have to do what they recommend.
Now zoning would be involved in the process.
No.
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 If you take.
So, so if all these changes were to be made, so councilperson Testa is, is proposing a very sequential and long proposal here. If this piece came back from the planning board, regardless, hang on, hang on, Judge, because I just want to, just, because this is what she's trying to state here. And the council did change the zoning code, then, just like you're saying, if it wasn't allowed in the use table again, then it would go to the zoning board for a variance. But that would only be, that would only be if this somehow all passed before that all went to plan. That's the other issue, that this is all happening at the exact same time.
You need to be conscious of the process, that this is all going to play out, from the planning board to the zoning.
I'm not completely convinced that, that when you're amending the zoning ordinance, that you send it to them to the zoning board.
No, you don't, we're not saying that, no one said that.
Planning board.
And it's the zoning board that comments on that.
Yep.
They have hearings, and then they send it back to you, and then you determine whether you're going to change the zoning ordinance.
So, Ms. De.
That has nothing to do with the planning board.
No, it has all to do with the planning board, not with the zoning board.
I'm saying.
It has all to do with the planning board and nothing to do with the zoning board.
After the step of.
If we manage to do this, then the zoning board could grant a variance.
The zoning board currently can grant variances, because there are certain areas where it's not allowed presently, as read.
And what are those areas?
Mostly residential.
Mostly residential.
So is this a residential area?
No, no, I, the areas, the areas that it's allowed, not.
It's only allowed in that area.
NMUs are a type of residential district.
It's a mixed-use district.
Right, include, which includes residential.
Which includes residential and commercial.
Right, but it is a type of residential district.
The only district that doesn't have just residential and part of a neighborhood mixed-use is north, the North Utica Corridor with Fast Track. I mean, Burn Dairy, every other, every other gas station that's inside the city basically has a residential bordering its district. Right, either way, you can't pass this, is, is it, even if it's, even in this form, it still has to go with the resolution.
First of all, I do want to make it clear that I had no expectation of trying to pass this tonight. My intention here was to put it into committee, because I understood that according to the new zoning ordinance we passed in twenty twenty, this has to get, we have to ask for the opinion of the planning board before we can proceed. I knew that, so I didn't have any expectation that we would pass this tonight, but I wanted to get the ball rolling, I wanted to get it into committee. I wanted to then be able, be in a position to tell the planning board, we've put this in committee, can you take a look at it, can you tell us what you think? That's what the law requires. Now, I want to ask Ms. DeGiorgio a question, so that the form of, the, the question about form would be literally sort of reproducing that use table, and showing how it would be different in, in, in terms of my description?
That we would, there wouldn't be a check there.
In that box, is that, that's the form you would need it to be in before we ever voted on it as a final ordinance?
There would be a check.
If we did.
Correct.
There would not be a check mark in that neighborhood, because it would not be permitted in an NMU.
Well, there wouldn't be a check mark, but there would just be nothing permitted in that.
That's what I meant, it would, well, the, the way that the use, the way that the use table works, it's either empty or there's a check mark.
No, there's, there's specific classifications, there's either an S, Designating Site Plan Approval, or an SP, Designating, um, Special Use Permit.
Right, okay, so how, right, I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me right now either, what would it look like?
It would be an entirely blank row.
Right, that's, it would be empty, there would be nothing, right, okay.
But you still should have a special use permit, so you shouldn't take away that check. It just wouldn't be zoned, I'm sorry, can I have the floor? Yep. Because I, I think, the special use permit goes beyond just allowing that type of use in that area, right? We've talked about it, you have times, you have, you know, dates, things that, there's a whole bunch more to just whether or not that that has a use permit there. So you can't just uncheck the special use permit box, still in a residential mixed-use, correct? You still have to have that special, I know, I'm just trying to clarify, because when you're unchecking all this, all these boxes, it just takes away that extra step to that process.
It's already into the planning board, so that process is a moot point at this time.
No, no.
You can't change the zoning after.
Right, but they still have to go through a special use permit through planning.
Okay.
Currently, but what the legislation is suggesting is that you may take that out.
Is taking that out, so what I'm saying is that don't take that check mark, that, that check out.
I don't think we can do that, either.
Well, yeah, you can, you just leave it as that special use permit, the only thing that you want to do is take, is take convenience stores, gasoline stations, out of just having a special use permit, you want them to actually go in front of the council and have that, have that zoning, does that make sense?
They'll never go before the council.
Well, we can, if we change the zoning for it, kind of think about like the heavy industrial for the.
But I would ask, so I would ask, so we would have to send this somewhere, so somebody applies for a building permit, and, and then they say, and then we look at that little table and say, this is where we send it. So if we sent it for the special permit, and you kept the SP there that you're suggesting we keep there, then that would, that would indicate that it's permissible.
This legislation says no longer permitted through either a site plan review or special permit, you should at least still keep that special permit in there.
No, but listen to what I'm asking you, because I don't know, I'm asking. So, I'm the co-solicitor, somebody wants to build a gas station, it doesn't say SP, I tell them, you can't build a gas station in that neighborhood without a variance. If it does say SP, I say you can build a gas station if you get a special use permit.
There's different checkboxes in the zone, in the, in the zoning.
I know, I read.
Right, so what I'm saying is that you should still keep that special use permit in there.
But that means it's permissible with the special use permit.
That's not what she, that's not what she's proposing.
Okay, so, well, according to this, it says no longer permitted.
Right now, they're permitted.
So they're taking that all, I know, they're taking that all away, what I'm saying is that it's still, it still has to go through special use permit, correct? Through this right now.
As it stands, yes.
So why wouldn't you want to keep that process in there, too?
Because it's not permitted.
I don't, I don't know.
Do you get what I'm saying?
That's what, that's what she's recommending, so that's not an answer I have.
I'm like very, it's, it's a very convoluted thing to try and to, try and explain in like four seconds of a meeting, okay? You should still keep that special use permit in there, even if it's no longer permitted use through the neighborhood mixed-use, is what I'm saying.
So that if the, if ZPA permits it.
Then it still has to go through them for time, for, does that make sense?
All right, I'd like to just interrupt, I, I don't think, I, council members, I'd just like to interrupt the.
It wouldn't go before the ZPA, it's a special use permit.
Because there, that's the purpose of the special use, you're saying it's allowed, but we want to have some regulation over what you're trying to do.
So even if something's not allowed, and then it gets approved, because the zoning changed, it still doesn't have to go through the planning board for site plan review and all that?
No.
I don't think that's.
All right, council members, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions with this.
Sometimes things go through the zoning board and then go through planning board.
Samantha, hold on.
I, I don't.
There's a lot of.
But that's what I mean, why would you want to take that extra?
Council members, I'd like to interrupt, there's a lot of questions with this legislation. The question on the floor is, does, is there five votes to put this in committee?
Yes. Motion.
All right, all right, there's going, we're going to refer this to committee, let's get to the next piece of legislation.
If you place this in committee, it only takes five votes to pass, I'm sure.
Our next piece of legislation is proposed ordinance number twenty-seven, sponsored by Councilwoman Aiello, it's concerning. Our next piece of legislation is proposed ordinance number 27, sponsored by Councilwoman Ilo, it's concerning a stop required intersection. Councilwoman Ilo, would you please give us a quick summary?
Yeah, there's been quite a few accidents in that area on John Street along the way, so UPD actually did the traffic study on it and recommended the two stop signs, and it sounds like it will be a big help to that area.
Excellent, any discussions with this legislation? Discussions closed, let's move to the next piece, which is number 28. Authorized the sale of wine and beer to FX Match Brewery Company, Friday, September 30th, it looks like some fun, is Sarah Nick Brewery? Full counsel on that one? All right. Next piece of legislation is authorized in sale of wine and beer for Bag Square Brewing Company. Any discussions with this? Full counsel again. Our last piece of legislation is Commissioner Deeds for Jade, how do you say that last name? Anybody?
How do you say Jade London?
Yousada.
Yousada, sponsored by Councilwoman Ilo, is there any discussions on this? Okay, if the council was in mind, they'll forget those pieces, Brian Thomas did jot out. We will, hopefully he'll get back in time, we'll call it recess until he gets back, and then we'll go over those pieces of legislation. Councilman Oy, you got something else, Councilman DeBrengo.
Actually.
Councilman DeBrengo, you got the floor.
Yeah, I, I know we didn't have a committee of the whole meeting prior to this, I just, just wanted to go over something in here, just to see if anybody wanted to discuss anything in the committee of the whole, because we didn't have one prior. There's only a few pieces in there. Also, I just want to get some insight on the council about the convenience store legislation. And I'll, we have the UPD here, and Marcus, I think we, we should set up a date, and we can get together in a room here and discuss that legislation and get it underway. We've been putting it off for the last, I don't know, year or so, and I think we have to get it, get it behind us, so. If we can set up a date and time, I don't know if everybody's available at five o'clock next meeting, we can, we have an hour to discuss it. If it has to go further, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll make another date on it. Is everybody okay with that?
I honestly think if you take what the zoning ordinance said prior and replaced it with the one that was there now, I think a lot of your problems will be alleviated.
Well, we, we didn't do that, so.
Why don't we discuss that?
We're gonna have a little bit of our hell of a jump. Councilman, Councilman Testa, thank you for that. Frankie DeBrengo, do you mind if I interject? Ordinance 3, 5, 9, 11, 13, and 15 are the sale of properties from Urban Renewal. They will be, the public hearing will be held, they are coming out of committee. Any questions for those sales, please bring them up now. If not, we'll move to the sale of Whiteville Street, Broad Street, Nielsen Street, Taylor, Catherine, and Blaine Dino. Is there any questions on the sale of those properties? Okay, I guess we'll wait till Brian Thomas, we'll have recess until he returns. Thank you, Councilman.
For 7, 2022, this meeting of the City of Utica Common Council is called to order. Clerk, please call to roll.
Ayello, Birmaster, Friend, Miola, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Klassimo, Testa, Debrango, Gleamey all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'm just going to state that after the public hearing, not public comment, but the public hearing on the URA property sales, we will be changing the order of business such that we can deal with a number of proclamations this evening, which people are here for, and then the agenda will go back to normal business. First order of business is the minutes of the previous meeting. They've been posted to ECO 360 for the council and public to review.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, please.
Debrango's the second. Any opposed to the waiving of the minutes? Okay, it's been dispensed. Okay, the public hearing this evening is on the following ordinances. Ordinance three, sale of 1710 Whitesboro Street. Proposed ordinance five, 2160 Broad Street. Proposed ordinance nine, 1220 Nielsen Street. Proposed ordinance 11, 1407 Taylor Ave. Proposed ordinance 13, 816 Catherine Street. Proposed ordinance 15, 408 Blandina Street. No one has signed up to speak on behalf of any of those properties. No one seems to be speaking up now. Public hearing is now closed and will move on to those properties. Is there a motion to pull the sale of 1710 Whitesboro Street dated 8/3/2022 from committee?
Thank you.
Who's the motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, thanks. Pull that out of the bag in here. Any opposed to pulling that from committee? All right, this is the ordinance approving the designation of Najiba Delivar as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of GML for the purpose of the sale of 1710 Whitesboro Street for a sum of $1,000. Public hearing was just held. This ordinance is on the floor for a vote.
Nineties adopted.
It's our motion to pull ordinance number five from committee. Who has the motion? Beatrice is the second. Any opposed to pulling from committee? Okay, this is the ordinance approving the designation of Arthur Purda, Automotive Experts, as an eligible and qualified project sponsor for 2160 Broad Street for a sum of $150,711 from URA. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to pull ordinance number nine, 1220 Nielsen. It was Miola and Williamson. Any opposed to pulling from committee? It's on the floor. This is the sale of 1220 Nielsen Street for a sum of $250 from URA to Agnes Cooley. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposed ordinance 11. We have a motion. Motion for Miola, second from Beatrice. Any opposed? It's on the committee on the floor. This is 1407 Taylor Avenue. Ordinance approving the sale for a sum of $250 to Yajira Almanzar from URA. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposed ordinance 13, Miola. Debrango's the second. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? This is the ordinance approving the designation of Malik Hussein and Arbay Majani as an eligible and qualified project sponsor for 816 Catherine Street for a sum of $18,000 from the URA. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Ordinance 15, Miola. Second from Debrango. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? This is an ordinance approving the designation of Santa Maribel Garcia Duarte as an eligible and qualified project sponsor to Article 15 for 408 Blandina Street. This is for a sum of $10,000 from URA. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay, that closes the properties we held the public hearing for. We will now move on to proclamations. I'd like to ask the council, which one would you like to do first?
Can we make the motion to waive the rules, Lord?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. This is full council proclamation honoring the staff at Babes and five nurses for the professionalism and care.
Melissa, I'm going to read.
Okay. Councilman Beatrice, you can read from the podium if you'd like.
Okay, we bring them up there? We bring them up there or keep them by the podium?
Back here's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Come, yeah, come right over here.
And thank you all for coming.
So before I read our proclamation, I'm going to tell, give you a little history on what's, you know, what's going on. So, you know, this was in my area. I read the...
Councilman, we can hear you, but I'd like you to speak into the microphone for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I come across this on, on social media from Mrs. Lacatina, and I thought it was, it was in my area of the business. Babes is in, in my area, and I have a very soft spot for nurses since my daughter's a nurse. And when I read what happened, in the world that we live in today, all we constantly do is hear negative stuff. It seems like that. I mean, and I just wanted to take a minute to, to reward these people. I think the staff was great. I think these nurses were right there and they were in the right spot. So whereas, it's a proclamation honoring the staff at Babes and the five nurses for their professionalism and care. Whereas on July 11th, 2022, Donna Lacatina took her mother, Frances Morowski, to meet her lifelong friend, Jody Peckord. Donna and her friend always chose Babes at Harbor Point for their annual get-together so they can enjoy, enjoy the outside. During their luncheon conversation, Frances started to choke. The waitress quickly called for help and the gentleman came out to do the Heimlich maneuver. Frances, at this point, was blue and non-responsive. At the table sat five nurses who immediately took over. They laid Frances down, started compressions and CPR. A staff member came over to cover them with an umbrella. The paramedics were called and had arrived at the scene. And whereas, the City of Utica would like to thank the staff at Babes for their professionalism and care, the employees Omar Ruz, Daryl Swift, and Dorothy Pench. And whereas, a special thanks to you, the nurses, that saved Frances Morowski's life. They also are Susan Horst, Carol O'Brien, Barb Dillis, Debbie Camito, and Corinne Camito. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city honors these professionalism and caring individuals for their quick response. They certainly were in the right spot at the right time. And I also would like to add thank you to the Utica Fire Department, the paramedics that came onto the scene also. So like I said, let's give everybody a warm welcome for what they did. So we also at this time have these plaques, and I'll call your name, and please forgive me if I say your name wrong, but this is where I'm at here. This is URA. At this point, do you want to add the all? Melissa, is there a certain name?
No, I think they're all the same. They each get one, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, that's fine, thank you. All right, can you read? Yeah, but you have one, you have Babes, okay? So you're, you're the only person. Okay, so thank you so much again. I appreciate everything you've got to give it, and you stay strong, okay?
Thank you. Everyone pull that lever when you get a chance for the vote. It's on the floor for a vote. Yeah. Mark, can you go flip Joe's lever for him? Beatrice. Joe, can you vote real quick? Thank you.
Nine eight's adopted.
So this is a proclamation in recognition of the Levitt Amp Music Series and its ongoing contributions to Utica, New York.
Whereas arts and culture enrich any city in which they strive, thrive and contribute to the economy and happiness of such cities by making them into places that promote joy, inclusivity and connectedness. And whereas everyone should have access to free, high-quality entertainment, and whereas the creation of thriving public spaces where diverse groups of people can come together to enjoy arts, music, and cultural strengths, strengthens the social fabric of America and of the City of Utica.
And whereas the Levitt Amp Utica Music Series, sponsored by Utica Monday Night, has brought free live music in a friendly, family-friendly atmosphere where people from all across Utica and surrounding communities have been able to enjoy these concerts for six summers since 2016. And whereas Levitt Amp Music Series has just been awarded a three-year grant that guarantees the return of these free live concerts to Coppernick Park in 2023, 2024, and 2025. And this will mean that the Levitt Amp Utica Music Series will have brought a total of $245,000 to Utica to invest in our city, and that indirectly more money has been come, has been to Utica through the tourism and these concerts generate.
I'll have to fix that. Whereas these concerts have bought, have brought both nationally and regionally recognized musical groups and performers to Utica while at the same time highlighting our own homegrown musical talent and local youth, further developing the arts and culture in Utica. Therefore, be it resolved that the Utica Common Council proclaims that Levitt Amp Music Series is a unique and exceptionally valuable cultural asset in Utica. I just asked Michelle if she'd like to say something, and she said, no.
Thank you, Celeste, Katie, and Venice, and thank you, the City of Utica, UPD, everybody who helps us. It's absolutely a village to make this go. It's 10 weeks, it's all summer. We all slept a lot this weekend, and we're getting ready for the next three years. So we're really happy to be able to bring communal wellness. Everything that music, I know a lot of you guys here, we see you all the time at Levitt. It's good for mental health, it's good for total communal wellness, it's good for our community, and it's good to get out and dance and have this, this space. We'd like to thank the Levitt Foundation. When we did the math and Celeste asked me how much the total contribution has been from the Levitt Foundation, almost a quarter million dollars. almost a quarter million dollars of investment in the arts in the Oneida Square District is pretty darn impressive. So, we thanked the Levitt Foundation, City of Utica, and everyone involved, appreciate it.
Please put your votes up on the board. Yes.
Nineties adopted.
All right, we have one more. This one is proposed resolution number 31. Councilmember Miola, you are the sponsor, although, um, is this full council? I believe they're all full. Who would like to read this? You'd like me to read this, all right. This is a proclamation recognizing Charles Sonny Greco. Whereas, it is the custom of the Common Council of the City of Utica to recognize those public servants who have contributed so much to our great city and their time spent in service to our community. And whereas Charles Sonny Greco graduated from the State University of New York College at Oneonta in 2008, earning a bachelor's degree in political science. Upon graduation, he would go on to serve former Congressman Michael R. Keery on Castle Hill in Washington, DC. And whereas, in 2011, Sonny was appointed to serve as regional representative for the Mohawk Valley by New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo before coming to work for the city of Utica. In 2013, he was named chief of staff by Mayor Robert Paul Mary and has faithfully discharged those duties for the past decade. And whereas, Sonny has since continued his education by completing his executive master's in public administration from the University of South Dakota in an effort to better equip himself to serve the city and the citizens who have supported him for the past 10 years. Whereas, it is with both sadness and joy that this Common Council bids farewell to one of our own. We wish him well in this new endeavor at Borough Manager's Office in Kennet Square, Pennsylvania. And be it resolved that the City of Utica Common Council thus hereby recognize Sonny Greco and thank him for his years of dedicated service to the city of Utica. It is the efforts of such public servants that make the city so great. It is right and proper that his accomplishments be recorded in the history of the records of the Common Council of the City of Utica. Your votes.
Mr. President, may I have the floor for a moment?
Sure.
Um, everybody knows Sonny, everybody was able to, uh, reach Sonny, everybody was able to talk to Sonny. Sonny was one of those guys who just welcomed you to his door and did what he could to help you. The city's gonna be lost losing him. Um, I know all the department heads are very sad. Sad, right, guys? Yes. And, uh, uh, he's an asset, so I wish him all the luck in Pennsylvania. I know he'll do well, and, uh, Sonny, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I swear to God I didn't do that on purpose. Hey, he cleared the board and we'll read with it again. I did not. Sorry.
We're almost there.
You guys could've warned me.
Nineties adopted.
Oh, we don't see it either until...
Yeah, we don't see it, I'm sorry.
Those are the same as that, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right, so we're back to our normal order of business in which public comment period is next. I'm gonna call each speaker, there are four. Um, I'd also like to note before public comment period begins that after public comment period, we have common council guests, which we have none. We do have communications with the mayor, which have already been read, so I'll just ask us all to accept that. Then there are reports with the city officers and cash reports. At that point, there's petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. If anyone in the audience is speaking and they would like to hear from councilpeople if they do have anything to respond with, uh, uh, you know, in accordance with public comment, it will be during petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. So, I encourage everyone to stay for the duration of the meeting if anyone does have anything to say. Thank you. First speaker this evening is Tom Montan. The Public, uh, Common Council providing you a copy of section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you. Please state your name for the record, name is all that's required, and you may begin.
Right. Uh, my name is Tom Montan. Um, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Uh, my name again is Tom Montan, I'm the executive director for Sculpture Space here in Utica. Sculpture Space, for those of you who don't know, is a 40-year-old nonprofit artist residency program which has hosted over 600 of the world's very best sculptors in Utica. These artists come from all over the world and live and work for two months on the northern edge of the brewery district. Uh, with years of hard work and dedication, we as an organization have transformed the former Utica Steam Engine and Boiler Works into an artist's focused residency that provides space and time for talent to bloom. I wanted to take a moment to share with you the challenges of the last week at Sculpture Space. On the morning of Sunday, August 28th, we discovered that our studio was seriously vandalized. This was, to say the least, a very traumatizing experience. In an instant, the hard work and dedication of over 600 artists and at least as many volunteers in the community was violated and destroyed. This is one, uh, in this one violent act, every single window in our facility was broken. Our entire kitchen was overturned and dishes and glasses thrown throughout the entire studio. Our walls were spray painted everywhere with graffiti. Cans of colored paint were poured on the floors and tracked throughout the studio. Walls were torn down, fires were started, our entire office was in shambles. An expensive camera was torched and thrown into a broken toilet. This toilet spewed water everywhere, and all sinks were on full blast for hours, flooding half of our studio. In our office, historic files for the last four decades were on the floor. These became a soup as they mixed with the flooded waters. All destruction had the simple effect of extinguishing decades of our organization, never to be recovered again. We thought this war was the worst of it, but we were wrong. Before I continue, I want to thank the Utica Police and for, and all of their officers involved in this case. The police were there when I called immediately, and within a day, they found those responsible. This was done with the utmost professionalism and dedication to find justice for us, the victims. On the following day, we learned, along with many others across the city, the state, the country, and indeed the world, that those who vandalized our studio were not drug-addled crazemeniacs, they were not hardened criminals. Instead, and much to our dismay and indeed sadness, they were children within our own neighborhood, between the ages of eight and 11 years old. Those who destroyed nearly 45 years of history in one evening were our children. This incident hit a deep chord and garnered large amounts of media coverage reaching as far as one of our nation's largest newspapers, The New York Times. I stand before you tonight not to ask for your sympathy. We are a very strong and old organization, and we will survive a setback. Instead, I stand before you as a sensitive human with a plea to my community to separate the actors in this drama from their bad actions. Reactions to what happened in our studio that evening should not be vindictive. Reactions should be firm and intentional, but these actions, not the actors, are all about, are they're about all of us. It is our community saying that something is indeed very, very wrong. Uh, this was an act of rage from our children. It was our children saying loudly that they do not belong to the community that they are growing up in. How very sad is that? Today, I have a truly heavy heart, as a plaintiff in this case, I don't want to be responsible for allowing my inaction or sanctioning a path forward for an eight-year-old child to be incarcerated and pushed down a road of future failures. What can we do as a community? What can I do as an individual? What can you do as a governing body? Can we please find a way toward a restorative justice? A justice where consequence is not buried in jails and lengthy legal dances, but where the consequences include these kids in the future of their community and not separate from it? If we as a community are not there for our children, how can we expect them to be there for us? In asking these questions, I must look in the mirror and find the reasons why I personally have ignored these challenges for so long. I push my heroes and my villains into simple boxes that will somehow work themselves out. But it isn't really that simple. Our heroes, our villains, and most importantly in this case, our children, all need love, trust, and connection. And without this honest intention and connection in our children's lives, we all lose. I truly hope I am in a room tonight that wants a world where we look into the eyes of our children, and we see hope, and we see future dreams. This is not, if this is not the case, something is indeed terribly, terribly wrong. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Michael Bergano. The Common Council is providing you a copy of section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
All right, please state your name for the record, you may begin.
Michael Bergano, 30 Woodlawn Avenue East, Utica, New York. Over the past month, what I'm standing here in front of everyone about is basically, in the past month, we've collected within the footprint of the proposed Stewart, um, gas station slash convenience store over 300 signatures that I have right here. If you'd like to make a copy afterwards, you may do so. So, those 300 signatures basically are in opposition to the Stewart's. Everybody says to me, "Why are you in opposition to, you know, regarding the Stewart's or whatever?" My question that I'm is that currently, there is three existing gas stations slash convenience store, full-size convenience stores within a half a mile of this proposed site. Uh, that's number one point. Number two, um, reading the master plan the Common Council put together a little while back, it states here in the last paragraph, "The council recognizes the efforts of this plan to examine the state of the city as a whole and look at the, and look forward in shaping a positive future for the city." And it just seems to me that by putting another gas station across the street from a gas station and down the street from two other gas stations, I don't see how that's really looking out for the positive outlook of the future of the city. So, thirdly, um, we are aware that there's a two-family parcel on Genesee Street on the corner of Woodlawn Ave West and Genesee Street to be torn down. By adding a point of entry or exit there, it will definitely reduce property values, which is documented by many sources of real estate professionals, that a full-size convenience store gas station does devalue the neighborhood of the footprint of the area. Number, another point I have to make is that I understand the city owns 101 Woodlawn Ave West. My question to everyone here is, how long has the city owned the property? And what are the intentions for the future use of the property? Because currently, the grass is like about this high, but that's, that's for another point. Traffic impacts. When school starts, obviously, there's a lot of, um, there is a definite bus stop right there on the corner which has major, you know, it's a concern for youth getting on and off the buses. So, to be aware, just a point to be made, which was kind of confusing to me, because I live right down the block from there. When the traffic study was done by an independent traffic study, uh, company, the traffic light on the corner of Genesee Street and Woodlawn Ave East slash West, it's always a traditional stop and go light. At the time of the traffic study, it was turn T flashing yellow, which kept the traffic flowing through there more readily, and no traffic was being backed up. It is a very congested area, especially in the early morning and late evening hours. Foot traffic, South Utica neighborhood currently is an area with many walkers, runners. Basically, it's a walk-in community. How will the walkability of the area on Genesee Street at the proposed site, with the increase of traffic flow entering and exiting this gas station, how's it going, how's it going to affect just people naturally just walking up and down the street? Another point to be made, I talked to the Speedway, uh, manager, who's been there for three years, and I asked her, I said, "Have you had any criminal incidents here?" She had to call the police, you know, drive-off, shoplifters, or whatever. She said she's been there for three years. Now, that's not a full-size convenience store, that's my point I'm being, I'm making here right now. There has not been one police call to that small Speedway store. However, I have documented, courtesy of the UPD, um, some, uh, crime statistics from the Stewart's on Culver Ave and the Stewart's on Court Street, going from 1121 to 81522, so basically about a year and eight months. Stewart's on Culver Ave has had 55 incidents of criminal activity, whether it be a drive-off, a petty larceny, or to mental health issues, or somebody found in the bathroom, or whatever, doing something that they probably shouldn't have been doing. Also, Court Street, staggering enough, has, has had 315 incidents. And my point to everyone here, which is, and I'm, I was an educator for 40 years, and I'm still hanging my hat on this. It makes no sense to me that you're gonna possibly place a gas station slash convenience store in an area within hundreds of feet of the children's center, which occupies little kids and parents bringing their kids to work, before work, after work. After school, they drop kids off there. It houses 105 kids a day. And you're gonna present something there within kitty corner from that where kids are playing outside. It's just, to me, it makes no sense. And like I said previously at, at Councilwoman's friend's, uh, meeting she had over there on the other side, there are other potential sites in South Utica for this potential development. The one site, I said it before and I'll say it again, which is highly traffic, is, uh, Sunset Ave and Shepherd Place, which is currently for sale, and, and I'm sure there's many other points for sale. One more thing?
One more point, yes.
One more.
Thank you.
Sorry. In conclusion, but please excuse me for my lack of knowledge with this because I'm talking to you guys, and a lot of this language is like foreign to me, but I truly don't understand how a developer on a, of a potential site such as Stewart's spends money for its development prior to any approval of any entities with the city government. So, has there been a soft handshake deal by administration to move this project forward? And if it has, how long has this been known and by whom it has been, has been known by? It just seems like there's a lot of something going on here that is beyond me, but anyways.
Good, thank you. Uh, next speaker this evening is Elaine Hage, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name...
Uh, yeah, the Common Council provided you a copy of section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
It's on the, yeah, it's on the podium, thank you.
Thank you, for the prompt.
Please state your name for the record, you may begin.
Okay, it's Elaine Hage. Um, I'm, uh, I live on 17 Tailcut Road, Utica, New York. Uh, I, um, I see it's been 36 years that we lived in South Utica. We chose to live there, um, probably because we wanted our daughter to go to UCA school. So, we love our area, and I know you all have your own little nest and you all love it. But I can't understand why they, you will put a gas station in the middle of a residential area. I understand that there can be a lot of things that could be shifted and moved to make it fit into the rules, and, and I, I know that things do change as things go on. But this is a place where we love, you know, it's just a scenic and historic place. And there are so many other places in Utica that are begging to be developed. So, why would you want to erode a residential area? Who wants to live next to a gas station? It's smelly, there's diesel, trucks have to continue to, to run, they can't turn them off. The light pollution alone is, is very, very strong, even though the people from Stewart's said they were gonna dim them at night. But one of the factors to keeping it... But one of the factors to keeping it safe is to keep your lights bright to reduce crime. So, it doesn't make sense. So, you've got light pollution that will shine all over, and they did show a drone of the plan, and I was amazed, because I could see the tree line of, of our street between Tailcut and French Road in view. And, and there's a huge, you know, there's a huge circle there that will be affected by that. Now, you must live next to a house that has a light going on and it's annoying when you're in your bedroom, but this will always be on. So, we have light pollution, we have noise pollution coming in and out, big trucks, and then you have air pollution, the quality of the air. And that is a thing that nobody can control. You can get a dark shade, you can put nose plugs on for the smell, you can even put ear plugs in your ears, but you all have to breathe the same air. Benzene, B-E-N-Z-E-N-E, is a chemical that is an all-gasoline. And the night, and the scary thing about, about benzene, which I, I have to say, I remember I loved the smell of gasoline going in the car when I was a little girl, just for that little short time. It's kind of a sweet smell. It's benzene. It's clear, it dissipates, but it's very, very toxic. And the more, the bigger, obviously, the bigger the trucks, the more you have, that's going to, that is going to dissipate. So, I thought it was in the gasoline. So, it's in a tank, it's underground, fine. They do leach, they have vents, it does, the air does, the benzene does come out of the vents. But what else is every time somebody fills it up, it's in the vapors. And how do you control vapor in a, in a place that is very close to a gas station? It isn't going to increase the quality life, it is not going to increase the value of any house that's there. But I want you all to go home tonight and talk to your families and say, gee, what about three miles away, which by the way, as Michael pointed out, are already three gas stations within a half mile, and that's, I'm, that's an estimate, to put another gasoline. It's, I have nothing against Stewart's, I like their ice cream, but I'm going to say, it is not a good decision. I think it's reckless. I hope that the city and all the people here that we voted for, and all the other places we had to speak to, scenic and historic and zoning, that we voted for you, and you, we are in your custodial care. We want you to make the right decision, and that's why I'm here. I'm here because I just think there's a better decision. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last speaker this evening is Chuck Marshall. Please come forward. Thank you. The common council has provided you a copy of section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
I am.
Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
I'm Chuck Marshall from Stewart's. I just wanted to, you know, come here, when obviously when something like this gets posted, we become nervous, because when we start the process for an appropriately zoned piece of property, and then come to find out that the council or members of the council are attempting to interject themselves in an approval that isn't otherwise necessary or sought, we just want to provide our position, obviously not position, but that we've done everything to date in our power to provide all the information that's been requested. Since 2015, 2016, there's been no neighbor complaints of either the Culver Ave or the Court Street Stewart's. There's been no code violations, with the exception of two instances of us failing to shovel our sidewalk at Court Street. So, we do try to maintain the properties as best we can and be a good neighbor when we can do that. Obviously, I'm concerned about the surprise of this, having just submitted our application and subsequent supplements. One of the things we did was at the August 9th meeting of the neighborhood held by Councilwoman Friend, there was a concern about the woodlawn traffic, which you, you know, since reviewed and provided a supplement, and overall-
Mr. Marshall, could you raise that microphone up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But overall, I just, I just find it problematic that we submit an application and then a subsequent application comes in to eliminate the project by uniformly changing the zoning. You know, we did seek those properties via fair arms-length transactions. Those are willing sellers who entered into our contracts, knowing the process that was involved. I know there was some discussion before the meeting started about the previous process for the siding of the Stewart's at Culver and Court Street. There was use variance sought for both locations. So, the conversation about the planning board versus the zoning board, that might be where that comes from. So, like everything else, we're here to participate in the process, we'll provide any information that we're requested. But obviously, our concern is that, you know, you seek an economic development project, there's no backroom deals, there's no pilots, there's no handshakes, there's nothing. We've provided the information that was requested and we knew would be coming because of previous projects we've done in the city, and now we're here again with a, you know, drama, which just does not seem to be necessary in other instances. So, we're here, you know, everyone knows how to find me. If you have any questions, just ask.
Can we, can we make a motion to, to please ask Mr. Marshall a couple of questions?
No.
Because there's, I'd like to make a motion on the floor to waive the rules in order to ask Mr. Marshall a couple of questions.
You're welcome to do that. There's a second from DeBranco.
All right, thank you.
Can I go first? Just one. Mr. Marshall, I just got to ask you a question.
Before, before we move forward-
Five minutes.
We're, no, not five minutes. We aren't going to go back and forth. If a council person has the floor, please state your questions, he will answer, we move to the next person who may or may not have a question, so that we can keep it orderly in, in this, in this realm. Thank you.
Do you mind if I hold the microphone, because this is more awkward?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I noticed what's going on over there. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Now, I, I don't know if we have the power to stop this, this, you know, the store and everything, but are you willing to eliminate the woodlawn entrance and exit, and maybe try to keep it a neighborhood and just, that property's pretty big, I understand, and maybe just have one entrance and exit on Genesee Street? Are you willing to maybe compromise if we can't eliminate the whole project?
Yeah.
Because, you know, there's, you saw, there's 300 residents that are, aren't too happy, and we represent the people, so I just want to pose that question to you.
Yeah, I mean, there's 300 residents who are in opposition, but that means there's probably about 20-something thousand that haven't signed a petition in either favor or opposition.
Do you have proof of 20,000?
All right, before, all right, before we start going back-
You don't have the signatures.
Councilman DeBranco, Councilman DeBranco.
All I'm saying is that, you know, someone in the neighborhood went and solicited-
Mr. Marshall, just hang on one second. Hang on one second. Just for every, for everyone in the room, please understand that this application was just submitted yesterday, and there is a planning board meeting to review this in its first instance next week. So, I under-
I'd just like to ask the question, are you willing-
We are not willing-
-to eliminate the entrance and exit without buying the two properties on Woodlawn Ave?
We're not buying two properties on Woodlawn Ave. We're only buying one property on Woodlawn Ave. And the answer to that is we are not willing to eliminate the Woodlawn Avenue access, because what that would require is everyone to go through the, the traffic signal, again, to use the store. And it would also require two curb cuts on Genesee Street, which from a planning perspective is the least efficient. In our application, we submitted a traffic study, and there's no level of service decrease. And then we provided a subsequent supplement after the request of the neighbors at the August 9th meeting, to show that the woodlawn traffic is approximately 900 cars a day, and the Stewart's driveway would not affect the operation of the signal or those cars.
I'd like the floor.
Councilman DeBranco, you have anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I've got two questions, and I'd like to say again, Mr. Marshall. Little disappointed in the terminology they used. I don't find the council addressing the issues, I don't find the council addressing the issues that the constituents bring to them as drama. That's our job, that's our responsibility. With that said, you said that you had met with, you had met with councilperson Celeste on, up prior to the August 19th meeting, correct?
It was August 9th, and prior to that, there was a meeting of Commissioner Thomas, myself, Councilwoman Friend, and the mayor.
So, with, with that said, so you kind of brought that drama with the administration and councilperson Friend, because I didn't know anything about Stewart's coming to South Utica until councilperson Friend had brought that up. So, when you meet with people prior to submitting a planning board application, it kind of leaves us in the dark, and this is what we've got to deal with in the aftermath. So, me personally, and the way we've dealt with things before with Stewart's, is you've submitted an application to the planning board. All that process is done through that. So, to me, the only drama that was brought upon is giving that information to other councilpeople and the administration, and giving the opportunity for the residents to jump onto this prior. I never seen any planning, I never seen anything for the planning board. So, with that said, I want to know how councilperson Friend was privy to that information prior to any councilperson in this room. I mean, it-
All right, so, here's, no-
I mean, but, but you get what I'm saying?
I would like the council people to state their questions.
That was my question.
All right, so-
How was councilperson Friend privy to the information prior to that August 19th meeting?
All right, so, listen.
It's a question that I want to ask, because he stated specifically that drama was brought to the room.
I will direct when and how the floor is speaking. Mr. Marshall, please just answer the question, so we can move on, and then we'll end of the-
I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I didn't contact Councilwoman Friend directly, so I assume it was, you know, someone in city law.
So, so, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because this whole interaction, while the, the council did vote to allow this, is, is exactly what is going to lead us into what's currently on YouTube from over a decade ago.
Correct.
Now, so let's just please continue. Councilman Williamson, do you have any? Does anyone else have any?
No, I'm at large. I'm in charge of, I do the whole city, I didn't get notified.
Yeah, but do you have anything in particular?
If I didn't get notified, I'm at large.
Councilman Williamson. All right, so we're going to, all right, so the only person who has their hand up right now is Councilman Miola.
Any person?
Yeah.
Um, do anything I, I'm understanding has got to go to the scenic and historic first this project?
No.
Yes.
It's going, it is going to planning board first, but then it will be referred to the planning board thereafter, scenic and historic, excuse me, thereafter, and then back to the planning board.
Okay. Is there any way, it's going to be a public notice in the newspaper, is there any way that, your honor?
No, 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 that, just please state the rest of your question, because we're moving on after this. We're moving on after this.
Is there any way that we, see, there's about 300 people here? I think they, if the common public council don't mind, I think they should be notified of any type of public hearing that's going on with this project. I think we should send them letters. Is that possible, Ryan, if you can do something?
It would be my preference to follow the law, and the law states that we will notify property owners of record within a 200-foot radius, and we will put a legal notice in the paper. Once you start varying that for every project, it's a slippery slope and-
So, so- All right, so, hold, hold on. After, after council, I, I'm pulling the floor back to the chair right now. Okay? Now, if the public would like to review the application that was submitted, it is publicly available, and there will be an agenda posted with all documents provided by Stewart's.
I also-
And, and the clerk, the council president, and any councilperson in this room may direct anyone in the public to those documents and that agenda. Okay?
I also provided a link to Councilwoman Friend-
Thank you.
-so she could share it.
All right, is there anything else from the floor? Well, we're not going to get into a debate on process right now, so just state it, just state it.
Honestly, this is why committee systems are important, because you should be at a committee meeting, not at a council meeting.
I am talking about procedure, because this councilperson asked me a question.
Yes.
She didn't know how, the only ordinance we have before us is Councilwoman Friend's, which has a zoning change, that is a general ordinance for gas stations. That requires the procedure, you may excuse this gentleman if you want, that's not true.
Well, that's why I'm saying, let's not-
Well, this has nothing to do with Stewart's-
Judge, I'll give you some time during remonstrances, so that we can end public comment, Judge.
I'm saying to you, because there seems to be some confusion.
Councilman Garamone, or, uh, Council Garamone, hang on just one moment. Just hang on one moment. Mr. Marshall, do you have anything else?
I apologize for using the term drama.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That is the last speaker this evening. I'm going to close public comment. Okay? Councilman Ga, or Council Garamone, I would like you to state your comments now, please.
I was asked by councilperson Tester, because the zoning law was changed between the last time she served and now. When you have a zoning change, which has nothing to do with Stewart's, a zoning change, there's an ordinance there, you said, "How does it get to the planning board?" Well, the, the law says that any amendment proposed by the common council, the mayor, Commissioner Urban Act McDonald's, the Commissioner Code, the planning board, any, anybody, zoning board of appeals, all of those matters have to be sent to the commissioner of urban and economic development, who then he sends a copy of the proposed zoning change to the planning board. When it's referred to the planning board, they will report there on, before the public hearing provided by the New York City Law, which involves the common council. They will either recommend the adoption of the proposed amendment and state the reasons for doing so, describing any conditions it believes makes the amendment advisable, specifically said for the manner in which it's, this opinion amendment would be in harmony with the master plan of land use for the city of Utica, and would be inferred into the purposes of the chapter. If they reject the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, then the planning board shall similarly state the reasons why they oppose what the ordinance we are contemplating, which is in committee, should be or should not be adopted. Before you can adopt it, though, the common council must have a public hearing regarding the report that it has, and discuss its feelings about that report concerning this specific ordinance, which has to do whether again, the uses of gas stations will be changed in front of present ordinance. That's how you amend the zoning ordinance. It involves the planning board, and it's the commissioner who sends the proposed change to the planning board. You understand that, sir?
I do.
Yes. And then, it'd be in our committee, and we will await the public hearing, the report of the planning board, it'll come back to you, and you will discuss whether or not you're going to change the zoning ordinance to the city of Utica. That answer your question, how does it get there? Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I want, just giving the procedural-
Thank you.
-has nothing to do with the substance of matter of the ordinance itself. That'll be discussed by you amongst yourselves, after a public hearing, probably. Thank you very much, Mr. Friend.
Thank you. All right.
Make one more thing, though. Sorry.
It's all right. No, it's fine. It's okay. We have no common council guests this evening. We had communication through the mayor, they were read into the record during the pre-meeting conference, consumed by the council and all attendance. Reports from the city officers, corporation council, the man in the report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Deputy chief.
Just a friendly reminder, it's the first week of school. Ask motorists to drive cautiously and have some patience. Also, the neighborhood schools, you know, every year we have some issues with parking at pickup and dismissal. Again, it asks the residents and neighbors to be patient with us. We, we try and educate the parents as to how to properly drop off and pick up students. But, you know, those schools were built as neighborhood schools for walkers, and now we have a lot of parents who pick up and drop, drop off students, a lot of neighborhoods have a hard time handling that. So, just ask for some patience and, and some caution when driving in the areas of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
I was going to address Councilwoman Clausmontesta's question about how-
You want me to move on, and then when she comes back, I'll take it. Commissioner Phillips.
I guess the other report from codes, there's, in this year, removal of green waste has been an issue. We've abated 200 properties, which means DPW picked it up, and people have been signing a bill, and there's a lot of people that are unhappy about that, so if you get a call, that's what that's about. It's about us enforcing- It's about us enforcing the green waste laws. And then also, I've explained it to the council before, but there's need to do it again. We got in a lot of complaints about the dumpster laws. Um, you have to containerize your dumpsters. You see dumpsters that are outside of a containment fence, they're illegal. We stepped up enforcement of that this year to try to come in compliance with the laws that have been passed and, you know, there's businesses that have seen that as a hardship. And the last thing, and many of you guys may not know, one of my employees is from Burma and I just hired her less than a year ago, she fled her village when they were being attacked without a wheelchair, she was paralyzed. So she managed to get to Thailand, border Thailand, without being able to walk, just her and her sister. She learned English in a refugee camp, got a high school diploma in a refugee camp and then taught English at that same refugee camp in Thailand. Came over here, taught herself how to walk again and graduated from SUNY IT and I hired her as a secretary and she's been a help because a lot of our immigrants are the laborers, the people that code sees, and they can't, couldn't communicate with us as well until I hired somebody that speak Korean and, or means. And Brian then stole her from me and hired her in section eight, which will start next Monday, so I want to thank Brian for that.
Absolutely.
And congratulate, say, because she's, you know, getting a big raise out of it and it's a good promotion.
At least you know where to find her.
Thank you.
And clearly about our boss.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and then, can I add something to your comments about green waste?
Yes.
All right, if the public is listening, if you have green waste, when we have to containerize for the city purposes, if you do have things that you cannot containerize, you can call the solid waste authority and they will come and assess the size of the green waste that is there to pick up. And you can have off-cycle pickups done, but if it's not by the city, you have to call solid waste authority and then they can take care of it. They come and assess the size, it's a very, very reasonable fee. I've done it myself multiple times when I've had to cut trees, et cetera. So there is an avenue to do that if you have something that is too big or too cumbersome to containerize when we are not during the containerization period. So solid waste authority, not the DPW. All right, thank you. Commissioner Thomas, you want to bounce back to what you were going to comment on now that Colosmo Testa's here?
Yes, I just wanted to address your question of why councilwoman Friend was made aware of the project before the rest of the council.
Do you like your body?
Um, what's that?
As I do like your body.
Several months ago, Mr. Marshall reached out to me and let me know about the potential project. He gave me a draft site plan and asked me to review it and I laid out for him, should he decide to move ahead with applications, what the approval process would be. He took that under consideration and sometime shortly thereafter let me know that the business was looking to move forward with the project on that site. I made the mayor aware and as he is, as has been his practice for most of his administration, he instructed me to reach out to the councilperson in whose district that project was located to give them a heads up first. She asked to meet with Chuck and I set up that meeting in my office. As Chuck mentioned, it was attended by the four of us, the mayor, himself, councilwoman, and me.
Are you going to do that again?
What's that?
Are you going to do that again?
Am I going to do that?
All right, please.
I know.
No, 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 actually, no, just, are you all set?
Yeah.
Thank you. Chief Fingersaw, you have the floor.
Uh, no report tonight.
Thank you very much. That closes reports from the city officers. I believe we have a cash report?
Yes, the city of Utica cash report for July 2022 totals 87.763 million received and filed.
Thank you. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. I'm actually going to take the floor first. I just want to state a couple of things and lay out, and this is petitions, petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. So this is me speaking right now. I just wanted to lay out a timetable over the last couple of years. Just, the public is in attendance right now, I'd like to also lay out a timetable of what is to come and what has transpired so far. Last February, I believe it was February, the common council, after many years of debate, deliberations, mailing out notices in water bills, et cetera, passed a completely new zoning code. That zoning ordinance was passed after much review and public interaction, comment, et cetera. That was last February. No, I'm sorry, two Februaries ago, last February of this year.
February 2021?
Yeah, 2021, right. So under that zoning code, it was made the change that differs from the last time a Stewart's issue came up. And that was part of what I believe councilperson Colosmo Testa was trying to explain the difference Fast forward to now. Obviously, as was stated, councilperson Friend, commissioner Thomas, the mayor, and Mr. Marshall had a meeting. Without any comment on that, there's nothing wrong with bringing people to the table. How we move forward is what's important. Now, what I wanted to state is that I've watched the community interact regarding this Stewart's proposal for, I think, a couple of months now, maybe a month or so, okay? And form opinions and form what they believe is their stance on the project and the plan was submitted yesterday. So I do invite the public to please reach out and we will make sure you can see the plan, but take a look at what was actually proposed. There are differences, there are things that aren't the same, and I say that because of two reasons. One, if you are going to be providing input, you want to be providing it based on what was actually proposed and that meeting is next week. So if people are going to start reaching out to planning board officials, city officials, et cetera, please review what was actually proposed. The other thing I wanted to mention was that this is an example right now of the process just playing out. The timetable for this started yesterday. Stewart's did act on what this council unanimously passed in February of 2021. They were acting on the actual zoning that this council had already passed and agreed to, wholeheartedly after much public interaction. Now there's a plan submitted to the planning board, there will be a meeting next week. The process states that the planning board will table that plan and will send that to scenic and historic to review first. Only at the time which it comes back to the planning board will there be a potential for the planning board to hear that and actually hold the public hearing. The earliest that could happen is October, but it doesn't necessarily have to be October depending on what is done at scenic historic. They may actually mod, things could be considered, modified, done based on scenic historic. So this is a process that started yesterday that if you are interacting with this project, now is the time you need to pull all the actual documents, look at what was actually supplied to the planning board in open fashion. And now the time started yesterday ticking. As far as all the comments that are being provided to the council right now, I know it's repetitive, but all of those comments should be delivered to the planning board. All of those comments should be delivered to scenic and historic. I'm not taking this off the backs of the council or saying the council members can't hear or represent you. I've gone to planning board meetings and spoken on behalf of constituents as well, but that is the process. I'm stating all this right now because I had to watch from the outside something very similar to this play out prior and it became very out of hand because people started addressing all of their concerns in the wrong venues. And I just want to make sure that all the actual concerns and everything is heard in the proper form so that after everything is completely said and done, the process played out appropriately. That's all I have to say on this. So thank you. First district, councilmember Katie Aiello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe Tom had to leave from Sculpture Space, but I did just want to thank them for coming tonight and speaking and instead of, you know, in a moment where they have every right to be outraged, they're using this platform as a time to shed light on the parts of our community that need to be better, which I think is such a testament to our artists here and not just because of the art that they bring, but in all the ways that they better and just, yeah, positively impact our community. So a reminder that for those who can, if you are able to, please donate at sculpturespaces.org and support them in their efforts restoring the building. And then lastly, just a couple of events coming up is September 10th, well, let's start with, yes, September 10th and 11th is Redeemer Cup, the international soccer tournament that we have here in Utica that will be at TR Proctor and then right down at FT Proctor Park is Proctor Olmsted Day. So they'll be doing tours of the park, food, music, it'll be a fun day. I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Second district, councilmember Robert Burmester, you have the floor.
I don't have anything. The only thing I'd like to mention is next Wednesday we have a West Side meeting, everybody's welcome to come. It's going to be down at Five Points at 6 o'clock, but other than that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Third district, councilmember Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm going to have a lot of things to say. That we, that we passed, I mean, as, you know, the president did a good job of summarizing, we spent a long time on the zoning ordinance. I read it, it's 160 pages, thereabouts, and I read it thoroughly twice and Mr. Thomas and his staff very generously arranged for a meeting for me with the architectural firm, but with the firm who had, we had, the consultants we had hired. And so I worked hard at understanding the zoning ordinance before we passed it, but I did not anticipate every possible consequence of the new zoning ordinance. And so it did not, there is the law of unintended consequences. There was a, there's an effect of this new zoning ordinance I did not anticipate. Had I anticipated it, if I knew now what I knew, what I, if I knew then what I know now, I might have proposed the legislation which is further down our packet then. I didn't. The fact that it's a, that it came as a surprise to anyone, tonight's legislation, is simply due to, I came up with an idea and as quickly as my tight schedule would allow, I submitted legislation in time to obey or be in keeping with the Thursday rule. So there's nothing, I mean, one, if one wants to resent the timing of my legislation, that's, anyone is free to do so, there's, there's nothing to be read into the timing of my legislation other than I came up with an idea at one point in time and then found some time to sit down and write some legislation and then submit it to the council. Had I come up with the idea earlier, maybe I would have submitted it earlier, but I didn't. I don't think that we, that the fact that we passed that zoning ordinance unanimously means that we have to be held to every single detail of it. We have already amended the zoning ordinance, as everyone will remember. When there was another unintended consequence from other people's point of view, not mine, I liked something that was in the new zoning ordinance, others, when they discovered that it was in there, didn't like it. We had a, we had a lively discussion on the floor of the council and I lost and others won and that's how it goes, but laws which are 160 pages long are meant to be revised and considered and refined, et cetera, et cetera. So that's sort of how that went. I agree with my constituents that a gas station convenience store does not belong on South Genesee Street in the, in the NMU district and furthermore, I think that since NMU districts are in fact residential districts, they are a kind of residential district, I think that we should, we should adjust, make that adjustment to the zoning ordinance in order to reflect something I believe now that, again, had I believed at the time that we passed or we voted on the zoning ordinance, I might have suggested then. So, you know, there's all of that. I, I think that, you know, Mr. Thomas did a good job of sort of laying out the timeline. Mr. Thomas mentioned to me there was something coming into the ward. I said, okay, I want to be kept in the loop on that. He kept me in the loop. I actually started a Survey Monkey early on just to kind of get the feel of the neighborhood, how did people feel about such a thing? And then I held a town hall on August 9th in order to both give residents of South Utica the opportunity to see what the specific plan was. Mr. Marshall came, was very generous with his time and information to really sort of show people what the specific plan was and then we had a lively discussion about it. And then Stewart's moved forward, submitted their application and as the president has described, here we are. So, you know, all of that. I, again, I will defend that I don't think gas stations belong in residential neighborhoods and all, but I will defend that before the planning board, as is the president's point about the appropriate process. Of course, it's always appropriate that people bring things to the council, right? And I don't think that the president was implying otherwise, but the planning board will and the scenic and historic commission will be the appropriate bodies to actually make judgments about these things. So there's that. It is, I am sorry that Mr. Montan had to leave. I do think it's important that if we want to live in a safe city, if we want our spaces to be safe and our, our own persons to be safe and our homes and businesses, et cetera, to be safe, we can't not invest in our children and then expect to live in a safe city. It's just very, I think that that's a very straightforward claim and I, I, I think that what happened at Sculpture Space is a really clear example of that, but of course, there are clear examples of that every day, right? What happened at Sculpture Space is a little more dramatic or a lot more dramatic, but I deeply appreciate Mr. Montan's graciousness or, I don't know what you want to call it, largeness of heart in, you know, as Ms. Aiello said, he has every right to, to play the aggrieved party and instead he's not and I really admire that. And again, he, he asks us to distinguish between bad actions and bad actors and I thought that that was very well put. And then lastly, I think the council needs to rethink the legislation around green waste and perhaps change the arrangement in which people are allowed to put it out loose, then put it in containers and then put it out loose, but never lawn clippings and everybody is expected to keep track of all the dates when those different things change and I think that that's part of the rea, it's one reason we get poor compliance is that we have a fairly complicated system and maybe a less, a less complicated system would be one that more people would be capable of complying with. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'll say nothing then.
Oh, that's all right. The most important is, thing is that we can speak and we can listen, right? Fourth district and majority leader Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, I understand in any project we only have a 25, was it 2,000, 200?
200 foot.
200 foot radius do we normally send letters out to notify residents in the area? But on this circumstance, I do believe that because there are people with their names on it, signatures and addresses, we should at least be congenial and give them when the notification of the public hearing is.
And that's the point of the legal notice in the paper.
That I understand. I do believe we should change that because there are people who are asking about the project, so I just think they should be notified for the public hearing on that. Other than that, if they are notified, they can't dispute anything, that they have the opportunity to come and voice their opinion during that public hearing.
Councilman Miola, Mr. Marshall wanted to address the notification point earlier. Do you want to just state what you, what you have really quick, please?
I created a link and sent it to councilwoman Friend. That link is shareable and accessible. If you give me the list, I'll send a QR code to each of the people on that list.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you for sharing it. That settles it. Thank you very much, Mr. President, for helping me out with them. Next thing is, everybody knows about, kids are back at school, right? So we're all worried about school buses, we're all watching kids, we're all looking around, I'll just make this short and sweet. Please, please. Right now, parents, children, we all got a lot of things on our minds, but we have to focus on driving. Our children are more important than anything right now and you know and I know, beginning of school, they're going crazy, they're trying to get settled down and they, you know, walking across the street is not their favorite thing and sometimes they're on their cell phone too. So please, let's look out for our children and let's be very cautious around the school buses. Thank you very much.
Fifth district.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Urban, you have the floor.
Um, you have to excuse my voice a little bit. This Sunday we have an event going on, the Soul of Corn Hill, and they're going to be giving out book bags, have some gospel choirs there, probably a DJ out there, prizes, all kind of stuff for the families and the youth in Ward 5. So if everybody, if anybody has a chance, spread the word and have people come out. I don't know how many book bags they have, but I know a lot of organizations have been handing out book bags. So, this is an opportunity for families, you know, from Ward 5 in different areas, if they haven't gotten their kids' book bags yet, to come out and get book bags. So, I think that's about all I got. It's been going pretty good in the district. I made some comments to some people about how it's starting to look a lot better as far as appearance, where people actually getting out, picking up in front of their houses and sweeping the 10 or 15 feet in front of their houses. We're working on getting a lot of people in our district to do that, to take pride in their homes, even if they're rental properties, you still need to get out there, and we've been pushing that a little bit. So, I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth district, Councilmember Joe Viedres, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just got a couple of things. When I took over as a councilman three years ago, it was brought to my attention that there is a Revolutionary War cemetery at the end of the Cosby Road Extension. I've lived in North Utica my whole life. I never realized it was there. There was a lady, Mrs. Puleo, and her granddaughter, they were talking to me about it, and I reached out to Councilman Williamson, he knew about it. And I just want to thank a few people, the last, in the last week, we started clearing this out. We've cleaned it all out. It's the first step of what we plan on doing. But I want to send a large thank you to number one, Councilman Williamson's ROTC kids, the ROTC kids that came there and worked the other day. Dick Briggs, Sharon Puleo and her granddaughter, the daughters of the American Revolution. And most of all, my fellow councilmen, Frank Miola, Mark Williamson, and actually former Councilman Jack Alonico, were there the day before, cutting these trees down. And I do want to thank the administration for letting the DPW come and pick up three truckloads of brush that we took out of there. I will keep everybody posted on what our next move is, but I think it was great what we did, and I want to thank you guys for helping me. Second thing is, I know we talk about flooding all the time, and I have a big, I have a route that when there's flooding, that I usually get in my car and I go to the route. So, we've had a problem on Cedar Brook Crescent for probably 20 years. This past year, the city of Utica, Deerfield, worked together. I'm going to give Stephanie Wurz the biggest shout out. During the storm the other week, I went to Mr. Ron's house, and I sat in the backyard, and it was a pleasure to see the water flowing, everything working. So, it was great that, you know, we did work together, and hopefully in the future, we could, you know, do more projects like this. But I want to thank out, special thanks to Stephanie. The city and the administration is very, very lucky to have this young lady. She's over and above the top, and she's always there to work with us. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Large and Majority Leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. For people from South Utica, thank you for coming out and voicing your concerns. I have one question. Do we have a property that the city owns that's going to be part of this project?
No.
There is no city property owned, not going to be foreclosed on?
No, there's a property that was foreclosed on for back taxes, 101 Woodlawn West. It's outside the Urban Oral Agency boundaries, so that means it has to be sold at the public auction. The auction has not been scheduled.
When do we foreclose on that?
What's that?
When do we foreclose on that property?
Offhand, I don't know. Earlier this year, I believe, there's been several rounds of foreclosures in the last few months, I don't know which round this was in.
So, for auction purposes, when does it go up for auction?
The auction has not been scheduled as of yet.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Large, Samantha Plasmo Testa, you have the floor.
I think I've exhausted everything that I've had to say tonight.
I'm sure.
If that's humanly possible. But I just want to add a couple of things. Usually what happens in the process, where we had committee systems prior, is Stewart's, for example, since they're here tonight, would submit an application to the planning board. The planning board review it, the common council would invite Stewart's in to show their plans, and, you know, there would be a little bit of discussion, what the council could recommend to the planning board, so on and so forth. So, without that process, it does kind of give that battle. Not that there's not a battle that, you know, me and Mr. Marshall haven't had before, you know, in regards to Stewart's, but that does alleviate a lot of that drama, so to speak, with having that process in there. So, again, thank you to the residents of South Utica for coming out tonight, continue your battle on, I guess, till the planning board meeting on the 17th. Thank you.
I think it's the 15th, but yeah.
15th, oh my God, September 15th, sorry.
What day is the meeting next week? The meeting is Thursday at 4:30. Again, there's no public hearing scheduled because... Correct, but the meeting, if people would like to just attend, it's a public meeting. And the Scenic and Historic is the fourth Monday of the month, I don't know the date.
And that's also just a public meeting.
Exactly. It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Correct. And just to clarify, it's been said a couple times, I think, that the application was received yesterday. Yeah, when, yeah, when was it received? It was received Thursday before the deadline, which was, like, we leave August 25th. Okay, I'm sorry.
One more question.
Because I requested it yesterday, so I've seen it, yeah.
So, they, would they, will they have to call for a public hearing?
They will. Yeah, they will.
Okay, if that means, okay, and then that's a fashion. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So, at the next meeting, they technically won't be able to speak at when they call for the public hearing?
Correct.
They're not calling, they're not calling.
They're not calling for it. The earliest the public hearing could even potentially be called for is October. Okay.
With it, with it said then, so let's clarify something. When will the public be able to speak at their, at the next planning board or Scenic and Historic meeting?
When, when there is a planning board meeting that they call for the public hearing. I can't guarantee and I can't say when the public hearing will be held, because it's going to depend on what the Scenic and Historic Commission does. So, if they take two months to make their determination, then it gets transferred back to planning board, then planning board will hold their public hearing. If they take three months, it takes three months.
I'd just like to interject, Mr. President.
Mr. President, can I interject?
One second. I just got done talking to Mr. Marshall, and he was kind enough to send a card out to every person who signed the petition, a notification card of the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Can I interject?
No, we're going to continue. That was to do with...
I just, thank you for clarifying that, and I'm sorry I interrupted, Mr. Brango.
Continue, please.
That was, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that they have to wait to speak till the public hearing is called.
Yeah, I think it's understood at this point. Thank you. Councilman DeBrango, you have the floor. Council Large, sorry, and President Proctor.
First and foremost, I got to wish my daughter a happy birthday today. But the other issue, you know, I know we changed the zoning way back when and everything, but I never anticipated something like this to, if there's a piece of commercial property and it stays commercial and you want to sell it to another person and they want to make a gas station out of it, nowhere does it say that if they buy two residential houses or three of them and make them into commercial properties. I don't understand that, because right now, they're under, they're under, what is it? Mixed neighborhood use, they're under neighborhood use. Their taxes are real estate taxes versus commercial. So, I don't, they can buy the property, but do they have the right to expand and take these homes from, you know, and I don't know that. So, maybe somebody could look into that for us, and maybe that would at least stop them from using woodlawn app. I don't know if that's, if there's a longer...
Reviewing the current application is the only way to start that question.
What's that?
Reviewing the application that was submitted is the only way to start that process.
All right, well, that's a question that I'm going to have, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right, I did have something about Sculpturespace and one other thing that I failed to mention earlier, because I just wanted to talk about the process. When we found out it was kids between eight and 11, there was a lot of outcry and people saying what they want to say and whatnot, but something has been brought up, and I just wanted to say something regarding how this might be handled. And Mr. Montan mentioned that, you know, these children potentially are not loved by the community, they don't understand the community. And I've personally watched children make huge mistakes prior and seen them correct their actions in the future. And the only true way they've, I've seen people grow into moving away from that type of behavior is understanding why it was wrong in the first place. Love is not always happy, love is not always games and fun, et cetera. Sometimes it's discipline, and it doesn't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to be out of control type discipline. Hopefully, if, I don't know what's going to happen with the courts, what's going to happen with these children, but the only way they'll ever move forward from this is if they truly understand what they've destroyed. And it does sound like Sculpturespace is trying to do something in that type of light for these children, and I appreciate that they could come out of such horrifying damage. It was, it was terrible, and think that way. But as for these kids, they need to understand that they absolutely were 100% responsible for their own actions and then understand exactly what they destroyed, otherwise they are just bound to make that same mistake again. The next thing is much, much happier, it's not Stewart's or zoning or Sculpturespace, St. Rosalie Feast. It went off, I think it was the first time in how many years, 13 years, 14 years?
I heard you played too, Michael.
I did, I played with La Banda Rosa. It was the first time we had played that feast in over a decade. It was phenomenal. I'd like to thank all the community members who made that possible, to see that street lit up again with the lights, to see the community come out and make food and share time and just listen to music, and it was, it was a great time. I grew up, ever since I was 12 years old, playing that feast, in the years where that was a six-hour-long procession.
Your father now, Michael.
Yeah, and my father, yeah. But point is, that feast was like part of the fabric of East Utica, and to see it reawakened was just a great thing, and I'd like to just publicly thank everyone who was involved, without mentioning names, because as soon as you mention names, you forget somebody. So, thank you to all. All right, that's all I have. Let's move on to all this legislation we have. It's a tall packet, right? Proposed resolution number one has been pulled, is that correct? So, you'd like to introduce and table it?
I'll make a motion, put it back in committee.
All right. Yeah, introduce and place in committee? Yep, any opposed? Okay, proposed resolution number one, which is a proclamation for the East Utica Classic, has been placed in committee. All right.
Mr. President, before we go to number two, we have to vote on 32.
Oh, that's why it's on top of our, there we go.
And that needs the Thursday rule waiver, sir?
All right, so would someone like to waive the Thursday rule for the...
I'll waive the Thursday rule.
Whole packet, please?
The whole packet, the whole entire thing.
Anyone opposed? Miola was the second on that. All right, we're good. All right, so proposed resolution number 32, it's actually an ordinance, this is, the numbers in the red place. Proposed ordinance amending Division 4 of the Civilian Safety Board and Auditor. Be it ordained in section 2-2-221 of Article 7, Chapter 2-2, Division 4, Civilian Safety Board and Auditor of the Utica Code of Ordinances, be amended to read as follows. It is amended in each section A and B to strike two members and replace it with three members. Your votes. I think, is it, did you place it on the bottom? Because I actually inserted it in the top, it definitely went around. Yeah. That's fine, we'll hold the final vote until...
For what?
Ordinance 32, she doesn't, doesn't have it in front of her, just yet. We good? Your votes?
90s adopted.
Okay. Proposed resolution number two.
Can you move for your podium, Mr. President?
Thank you, is there a second? All right, Williamson's the second, Civilian Public Safety Board. Be it resolved that the common council does hereby appoint an alternate person to the Civilian Public Safety Board for a two-year term commencing September 7th, 2022 and ending June 1st, 2024. The alternate will be included in all communications, et cetera. The alternate is permitted to read and observe the findings of the board, but is not permitted to participate in practices of the board. That person is Frederick L. Nichols. Your votes?
90s adopted.
Okay, proposed resolution number three is moved by Majority and Minority Leader. That is authorizing sale of wine and beer to Woodland Brewery. Be it resolved that the name of the sponsor is Woodland Brewery, the name of the event is Downtown Get Down. Date of the event is September 24th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Location is Handshake City, 26 Whitesboro Street, Utica, New York, 13502. Your votes?
90s adopted.
The next piece is resolution number six, moved by, this, this is not a resolution, this is an ordinance. It's moved by Councilmember Aello. Is there a second? It does say.
Is there a possibility for an amendment on it for the North Side only? Because the legislation reads possibly both sides. Yes, ma'am.
Actually, Chief, were you fine with just the North Side of this? We were looking for the amendment for the 700 block of Blandino.
North Side is the side that Caruso is on.
The North Side, yes.
Yes.
All right, so I'd like a second to at least bring this to the floor. Okay, now we can amend.
Yeah, make a motion to amend, to add North Side.
Okay, any opposed to the amendment? Your votes? Be it ordained, section 216, 368, Schedule 1, Limited Parking, Liquor Street, North Side, fronting 707 to 717, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
90s adopted.
All right, Councilmember Urban, are we going to, it's been revised, proposed resolution number six, placement of memorial street sign for Patricia Jean Zajak on Francis Street. You going to move this?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Second from DeBrango, would you like to read it, or do you want me to read it in the record?
It don't make a difference, you could read it.
You could read, as amended?
I have the amended copy, yes.
Yeah, I think.
Whereas Patricia Jean Zajak was a longtime resident of the city of Utica and the Ward 5 community, whereas Patricia's history of service to families and individuals living on Francis Street has been greatly appreciated by both residents and the city of Utica. She was recently honored with a certificate of recognition from the city of Utica posthumously and given a day of celebration for her contributions made to the community. Whereas Patricia was well-known for her love and for family and friends and enjoyed taking care of stray animals in the area, whereas Patricia enjoyed giving back to her community, where she volunteered for many cleanup projects and city initiatives and helped Francis Street residents. And whereas Patricia was not only a great mother, grandmother and friend, she was considered part of the, part of individuals that are considered to be community builders as well. Patricia always brought a smile and a lending hand to everyone who knew her, and be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica does hereby honor and recognize Patricia Zajak for her many years of service to the city, and be it further resolved that there shall be placed on the street at Francis Street and Oswego Street and Francis Street and Tracy Street, a memorial sign declaring this to be Patricia Zajak Way. Be it further resolved that this resolution be inscribed in the minutes of the common council, healthy council being held on September 7th, 2022. Second? Second from Miola, your votes?
90s adopted.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but Tracy, the mayor's secretary is in the audience, and she asked me to remind the common council that she thought that somebody would address it in reminders, that there is a re-laying ceremony Friday at the 9/11 Memorial at 10:00 a.m. Invite all members of the public and the council to come, that's what the city does, and she asked me to mention that.
The mayor, the mayor already read it into the letter.
No, I, we did announce that during the...
You did announce it? I don't listen to his letters.
It's okay, it's okay. And into the streaming, through your channel, but thank you, though, for the reminder.
You also said, close the windows.
Yeah, she also said, close the windows.
You were taking your name. We get that every day.
Sorry, I apologize.
The reminder is appreciated in any 911, 9/11 service, obviously, any reminder for that is fine, so thank you for that. All right, would someone like to move resolution number seven? Miola, second? All right, Testa's the second. Resolution approving intermunicipal agreement with county for a law enforcement coordinator for the Child Advocacy Center. I'm going to read, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica hereby authorizes and approves acceptance of the proposed intermunicipal agreement in substantially in the same form as attached here, too, for the term of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2022. Further resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute this agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the intents of this resolution. Your votes?
90s adopted. Nine eighths adopted.
Okay. We have some URA, URA property sales. Proposed Resolution Number Eight is the call for a public hearing on September 21st, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. for 713 and 715 Oswego Street. Would someone like to move this? Councilman Miola, second from Beatrice. This is a public hearing. The purchase, the price is $500. Your votes.
Nine eighths adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to committee ordinance number nine, 713 and 715 Oswego Street.
Thank you, Mr. Second. Any opposed? Sale of 713 and 715 Oswego Street, placed in committee. All right, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 3-5 Waverly Place to Jeanette Martinez for a sum of $8,500 from the URA. Again, September 21st, 7:00 p.m. is the public hearing. Second from Iolo. Your votes.
Nine eighths adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to committee 3-5 Waverly Place.
Second from Plasmo Testa. Any opposed? It's in committee. Proposed Resolution Number Twelve is calling for a public hearing at 1502, 1506 Miller Street. It's a sale to Joyra Tu and Gayler Ba for a sum of $17,426 from the URA. Moved by Councilman Miola. Actually, it's moved by Urban, seconded by Miola. Your votes on the public hearing.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the committee ordinance number thirteen.
Urban, your vote.
Nine eighths adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the committee ordinance number 13 for the sale of 1502, 1506 Miller Street.
All right, any opposed? It's in committee. Love you guys, making all the motions. Proposed Resolution Number 14, calling for a public hearing on 35 Paxton Street. Sale is to Abirham, Paul, Walenu, and Safaya Osman for a sum of $30,000. Again, the public hearing starts on 21st, 2022. Sponsored by Urban, second. Miola, your votes. Miola. There we go.
Nine eighths adopted.
Come on, guys, wake up here. We're getting here. Run the home stretch.
Mr. President, all right, are you white guys or what?
My second one's kicking in.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the committee ordinance number 15 for the sale of 35 Paxton Street.
Thank you very much. Second from Testa. Any opposed? It's in committee. All right, moving on to any transfer. Let's see here.
Make a motion.
All right. We have a motion from Williamson. Be it ordained, the city controllers who have authorized and directed to make the following transfer of funds. It's from contingency to 857988441 softball contractual. It's a sum of $30,000. Your votes.
Nine eighths adopted.
Okay, someone going to move, proposed ordinance 17, Miola? All right, just as a note, this is for the fiscal year 2122.
Closing out.
No. All right, this is to adjust payroll accounts for effect in contract settlement increased expense of gas and air lines. Most of them have to do with interfund, or interdepartmental transfers between DPW Street, cleaning, and Central Garage. Your votes.
Nine eighths adopted.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance number 18 is a transfer again, fiscal year 2122.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, this is from police CID salaries across parks and playgrounds to adjust our payroll accounts because of contract settlements. Your votes. Parks and playgrounds.
Nine eighths adopted.
Mr. President, for Resolution Number 19, I'd like to refer, restore New York's special project to committee.
All right, and that is a project located at 315 319 Court Street. Is there a second?
Are you putting them all in committee, all to restore New York?
You got to do one at a time, it's all good.
You got to run it in time.
Well, you can do the rest.
Yes, second.
Thank you. Any opposed placing this in committee?
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to committee, Resolution Number 20, also restore New York, it's a different area.
It is the 1933 building at Harbor Point. Second from Williamson. Any opposed placing that in committee? Resolution 20 is in committee.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Resolution Number 21, and implement the date as, as recommended by council, November 2nd.
Wait, this is number 21? I'd like to put this in committee, I literally haven't had the chance.
It's only called for a public...
This is the public hearing, it's a followback.
I'll second, I'll second.
Mr. President, I'd like to move number 21 and, and, and put for the public hearing date, November 2nd.
I'll second this question.
Okay, there's a second for Testa. This is Resolution 21, calling for the public hearing. November 2nd, is that the council?
It's 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, we just want to...
We were just going, just going over the time. 7:00 p.m.
Mr. President, number three.
Yeah, so for number 22?
This could be referred to committee, but you got to vote for it.
I'd like to refer this to committee. Oh, yeah, sorry.
21 is still not concluded.
Who's number seven?
It's okay.
I know, okay.
We're not voting on any of these pieces. Just calling for the public hearing.
You guys are, you guys are chatting, but we're, we're keeping everything in order up here, it's all good. All right, so we just called the vote on that one.
Ordinance number 22, Mr. President, I'd like to refer it to committee.
Second to refer that to committee? Any opposed? It's in committee.
Mr. President, same thing on ordinance number 23. I'd like to put the public hearing date November 2nd for 7:00 p.m.
Now, we're voting on this. It's a resolution calling for a public hearing relating to the acceptance of a street in the Harbor Point area. Your votes.
Nine eighths.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to committee ordinance number 24 concerning Harbor Point Public Street.
Thank you very much. Second from Testa. Any opposed? It's in committee. All right. Well, let's see, that was 24. Where's 25?
Probably she did love it.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything. All right, so ordinance 26 is the ordinance amending the zoning code sponsored by Councilperson Friend.
I would like to make a motion to commit this, please, Mr. President.
All right, motion to introduce and commit, second from Miola. Your votes.
I'm opposed, just because I'd rather have it in committee and it's proper. Thank you.
Councilperson Burmaster, your vote. Is that what you want? Motion to commit, Burmaster? Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. I'm just double checking, we've had some trouble with the switches. Thank you. We did, it's on, it's on record.
Mr. President, our next piece of legislation, ordinance number 27, but it needs to be read into the record as amended?
Yes. I believe, I took the correct one in my head. Yep, okay. All right, so this is Intersections Where Stops Required, sponsored by Councilmember Iolo. Be it ordained that Section 216, 358, Schedule C, intersections where stops required be amended to include the following, John Street and Bladen Dino Street Northwest corner, John Street and Bladen Dino Street Southeast corner. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected where necessary. You go with that? Your votes, second was Miola.
Nine eighths adopted.
Proposed Resolution Number 28, moved by Miola and Williamson, authorizing the sale of wine and beer to FX Man Brewing Co. Name of the sponsor, FX Man Brewing. Name of the event, Disco Biscuits Concert. Date of the event is Friday, September 30th, and Saturday, October 1st, 2022, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. That is the Serenick Brewery Courtyard, E30 Baric Street, Houston, New York 13502. And that address, we did confirm this, this is the one we were looking at the other day. All right, second, or no?
Vote.
Who's the second?
I was.
Okay, very good.
Majority, minority, you moved that, you moved that.
Yeah, right.
It's glorious over here. I did, three, the last, Councilmember?
Nine eighths adopted.
All right, I'm going to tell everyone on three to go.
This is an overt night.
All right, no, it's all right. Everyone is a lot, you know what? I, I, let me just take a pause for a second. Everybody has a lot on their minds, and people are very concerned what's going on, so it's understandable. Proposed Resolution Number 29 is moved and seconded by Miola and Williamson, majority leader and minority leader. It's the sale of wine and beer. Name of the sponsor, Bag Square Brewing Company, Downtown Get Down, Saturday, September 24th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Handshake City. Your votes.
Nine eighths adopted.
Next piece is a Commissioner of Deeds, moved by Iolo. Is there a second? Miola's the second. Be it resolved, the common council hereby appoints the following persons as Commissioner of Deeds. It's a two-year term, September 7th, 2022, ending December 31st, 2022. Jade Yucida, your votes.
Nine eighths adopted.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Good meeting. And thank you, everyone, for coming. All of your thoughts are appreciated.